I'd like to call the April 22nd, 2014 Royal City Council meeting to order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Councilmember Bagley.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
Mayor Yevakorn.
Alright, let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, public invited to be heard at any item at the end of the meeting. Okay, so we've got the April 8th regular session minutes to approve. Councilmember Allison.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the April 8th minutes as presented.
Seconded. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Oh, we're waiting for you. Okay, thank you. Yeah, it passes seven to zero. Donna, are there any agenda revisions?
No, there are no agenda revisions, but there's a revised parking agreement on all councilmembers' desk for the item 9G. And there are two minor differences, the times of starting and the expected attendance. Otherwise, it's substantially the same document.
Okay, thank you. Is there any word from the city manager?
I know, report, Mayor, Council.
I guess Ken Schutz and Julie Daigus from the Habitat for Humanity are here to give us a special presentation. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we thank you for having us back. We wanted to come back and report on what happened since the last time we were here. You remember on October 1st of last year, we came and presented the team that was about to go to Paraguay to represent this community to the Habitat for Humanity Organization in Paraguay as a partnership, and we wanted to report to you how that went and tell you about what's next. So you know that Habitat's mission is to make sure that every person has the opportunity to have an affordable decent place to live, and in fact, that's not just here in our community, but that's across the world, and Habitat is represented in all those places. Know that, just a reminder, that Habitat, being an international organization, encourages each one of its affiliates to partner with international locations, developing countries through their TIDE program, and in fact, as we reported last time, this affiliate that represents our community, the St. Frank Habitat for Humanity, has been doing that since its inception in 1988. What started to happen in 2011 for the first time is we started to actually send teams to those partner locations to represent this community to that community, not just send money, but also send people there. So in 2011, sent the first team to Cambodia, and last fall, we sent the second team to Paraguay. As you remember, the team to Cambodia was about 15 people, building 22 houses, and was very successful. The team also went in October of this last year to Paraguay. You also remember that in October, when we were here, you, by special resolution, commissioned the team to go out, and as you'll see in a minute, we actually presented that commission to the team in Paraguay as well. When we got there, the house we were building was for the Meza Parra family, Julia, and I'm trying to think of her name, maybe I'll sort on a slide in a second. But this family was a mom, a dad, and two kids. We knew that going there, this developing country was one in which the Habitat Organization was building houses for many people there. They had a developing program, but we didn't really understand as much about Paraguay as we did once we got there. We understood, once we got there, that Paraguay is a country that is coming out of a dictatorship in 1989, we believe, is the, when the last dictator was taken down. You see the slide in the far left-hand corner of the picture is when we were given a cultural introduction to the country. That is a statue of that last dictator that is put between two blocks, held down with chain, and the inscription is "Never Again," that the country is saying, "Never again will they be in that situation," and they're trying to develop out of that. The lower right-hand corner, as you, in a sense, you look over the top of the river, you see this slum area, and that slum area is where people are being pulled out of and building houses for them by the Habitat Organization. In the center, the cooking utensils, this is, even in a structured house, this is evidence of the way development is happening there. Really, when you talk about the strengths of Paraguay, what we saw there is a strong sense of family, strong sense of culture, the, there's a strong sense of history, about music, things like that. In the lower right-hand corner, you see the harps, the national instrument there is this harp. The day before we got there, they had actually broke the Guinness Book of World Records by having 410 harps playing together, and it was actually reported in the Wall Street Journal that next day. The family that we were building for, pictures of them here. Again, up in the right-hand corner, you see Julio, the dad, holding his daughter Julia, and the mom standing next to him on his right. You can see that she is very pregnant at this point, and we are building a house for that family that will accommodate that entire family. Behind the yellow structure is the grandparents' house, so we're building a house right on that same structure. The building is very much hand. You can see in the upper left-hand corner, our team was, as it was finishing the rubble foundation, had to fill in the inside of the rubble foundation with dirt and more rubble, and the tampers are just big pieces of stick that they are tamping down and then putting tile over the top of that. The only piece of power tool is that, seeing that mixer that the mason, the mason that really controls all the building there, was working on. When we got there, it was really just a piece of bare ground with a little bit of foundation that the dad had tried to build his own house, but never could make it work, and so most of our work was actually building infrastructure there. So you can see that now there is the first layer of, not only the foundation, but the first layer of bricks coming up. While we were there, we built the septic system and the leach fields for the house as well. Had to dig it all by hand and brick it in by hand as we moved forward. Again, the family, the grandfather on the very left-hand side of that picture is, his job, if you're, one of the previous pictures where you saw a cart with charcoal on it, his job was to take charcoal and put it into small bags and then take it throughout the community on the back of his motorcycle and give that to the other members of the community. When we left, the foundation was up about three feet, but we didn't get to finish the house because we were only there a week. They sent us these pictures since, that you see the house completed, and in fact, now you see the baby in the upper left-hand corner, in her arms, not in her tummy. So lots had gone on since we got there. The picture in the upper right is me meeting with their entire board and their executive director. You can see what I have in my hand is the resolution that you all commissioned for us, and we read that resolution to them, saying that we were there not only as Habitat, but our community had sent us with good wishes from you to them. So not only were we building houses, though, we were building relationships, and we wanted to report back to you that those relationships are in full swing. In fact, not only in full swing from a standpoint of just building more houses, but full swing of actually exchange. While we were there, the development director for their affiliate expressed to us that she wanted to learn more English, and our development director wanted to learn more Spanish. So this summer, for two months, we're going to exchange. Their development director will work here, working on their English, and our development director will work there, working on their Spanish. Wanted to just give you a heads-up as well, that this fall, October 4th, we will be again sending a team, but this time, the team will be going to Lesotho, Africa. Before that, we would like to again bring that team back and present them to you, tell you that who is going to be going. Lesotho, if you don't know much about that, Lesotho is one of three self-contained kingdoms in South Africa, and they are, in fact, one of the largest places where there are AIDS orphans. And so Habitat there has actually been working to make sure that AIDS orphans have access to the land that their parents had, so that they can build houses for them. So that's what we'll be doing alongside them in that country. So we wanted you to know what was happening, what we've been doing, that in fact, what you sent us to do, we did. We took the greetings from you, built the relationships, and in fact, we will be doing that again this fall as we send a team to Lesotho. We pretty much have that team developed, but if there was somebody else that just had an absolute desire to go, we would find a way to work that out as well. I think that's what I wanted to say this evening. I take any questions that you have.
First off, I have to speak for the entire council that we are honored in how you worked and represented our city. I think you did. Did us all well, and we sure appreciate the work that you and Habitat for Humanity does for the world. So thank you, Ken. Anybody else?
Okay.
Next, we have a proclamation designating April 21st through 26th as Community Development Week, and accepting proclamation will be Kathy Fedler. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Proclamation designating April 21st through 26th, 2014, as Community Development Week in Longmont, Colorado. Whereas, this year, the 40th anniversary of the National Community Development Block Grant Program, which has provided local governments with resources to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate incomes, and whereas, in Longmont, 30 years of community development block grant funding has had a significant impact on our local economy, not only through the 14.2 million in grant funding and the 1.7 million in programs income received and invested in our community, but also through job creation and retention, and improved local tax base, the physical redevelopment of our infrastructure and housing stock, the improvement of the lives of our lower-income residents, and the development of a strong network of partnership with the many nonprofit agencies that provide services to our residents. And whereas, the city of Longmont appreciates the flexibility of the Community Development Block Grant Program that allows our community to identify, prioritize, and resolve our most pressing local problems such as job creation and economic development, neighborhood revitalization, and affordable housing, and whereas, the week of April 21st through 26th, 2014, has been set aside to reaffirm the significance of the Community Development Block Grant Program in meeting the needs of low and moderate income residents and eliminating or preventing slum or blighting conditions. Now therefore, I Dennis L. Coombs, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim April 21st through 26th, 2014, as Community Development Week in Longmont. And I will invite all citizens in the community to join us in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and its importance to our communities. Thanks, Kathy.
Sure, Mayor and Council. This year is, as you said, the 40th anniversary of the CDBG program. Nationally, it's the 30th anniversary here in Longmont. We first received our grant in 1984, and I did put a little brochure by your desk that kind of highlights the accomplishments over the past 30 years. Usually during this week, this period, we highlight a project, or a program, or an agency that we partner with to show what the program has or can accomplish. However, this year, I would like to recognize my staff, which did such phenomenal work in 2013 and continues to do so this year. So, you guys would come up here. So this is Tracy D. Francesco, Janet Fulton, and Molly McElroy. So while continuing to manage all the activities and projects and ongoing programs funded by the CDBG Home and Affordable Housing Fund, they also took on added responsibilities around the flood recovery. A new grant program came with the flood called CDBGDR, and they conducted a tremendous amount of research on both the program itself, the regulations, what it takes to qualify, and also worked together data on a very tight timeline to document the city's unmet needs in order to provide that information to the state to get the first round of funding into our community. They worked to design and implement a new optional relocation program for the residents of the Royal Mobile Home Park who were displaced by the flood, and thanks to their efforts, 49 of the residents have been safely moved to permanent housing situations at little or no cost to the residents. For the remaining six residents, we are working with them on their plans to move. Tracy, in particular, did a fantastic job in learning about the nuances of mobile homes, how to move them. Thirteen were moved to other mobile home parks so far, and how to legally remove them. Thirty-three have been moved to the landfill, and how they can or cannot be repaired when flooded. She's now our expert on all things Royal and on mobile homes, much to her dismay, I'm Janet has taken on the home program management and has worked on getting the 2013 performance report and 2014 action plan completed and submitted, and will be the point person for the five-year consolidated plan, which is due this year on top of everything else. Molly came on part-time after the flood and has taken over the down payment assistance program management and is our grant writer for the CDBGDR applications that will be going into the state, and will also help with project management as we receive those funds and start to roll out those programs. Early next month, you'll see a council communication seeking approval to request funding from the state to operate a home repair program. We're going to ask for $2 million for that, offer rent assistance in the amount of $500,000, and provide down payment assistance also in the amount of $500,000 to Longmont's flood victims. So these are the folks that are going to be operating these new programs in addition to all their normal activities. I want to thank Tracy, Janet, and Molly so, so much, and please thank them profusely every time you see them, so they don't quit on me before we get all this work done.
Mayor, can I jump in? Also want to thank Kathy. You know, we've seen a tremendous amount of outstanding work occurring from throughout the organization at this point, but they truly have been outstanding in the process. I've had the opportunity to be in meetings with most of these folks, and when we try to weed through the chaos at times in terms of what we're having to understand and the pace that we have to move, it's amazing to see the expertise and the dedication. I've also had the opportunity in this process to sit side by side with Tracy and see how she deals with the residents as we were moving through some of the issues of the Royal Mobile Home Park, and again, the caring, the professionalism that all of them display has just been another part of outstanding work, and so Kathy, you've been a major part of that, and I want to let you know I appreciate what you do, and you have done a tremendous service for this
I think the three of you make this world a better place. Thank you from the City Council. You want to come forward? I'm ready. I stepped through one of those moves with Hillary Clinton, Biden, Biden. Probably takes a lot of patience to work in that field and a lot of understanding because sometimes things can move pretty slow. There's lots of hurdles to get through. So I appreciate anybody that's got the mindset that can navigate that field, because it does take a lot of perseverance to navigate that. Okay, I guess I need the sheets for public ready here. Okay, the first person on the list is Sharon O'Leary. Could you please come down, state your name and address for the record, please?
Mayor Coombs, councilmembers, my name is Sharon O'Leary, 534 Emery Street. I am the chairperson of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. I'm here tonight to let you know that our board unanimously supported option 1 on 11C. That is to jointly fund the feasibility study with the St. Frank Valley School District and to direct staff to present the proposal to the district for funding. Pratt feels that the demand for a competitive pool and ice rink is a high priority for Longmont citizens. Through a feasibility study, we will have an understanding of costs and financial impacts on our Longmont citizens. Also, by partnering with the St. Frank Valley School District, we will get a better understanding of what their specific needs are, and they are also one of our largest stakeholders. The citizens of Longmont will appreciate seeing that the city and school district are building partnerships. Presenting partnerships such as this have been successful in neighboring communities, for example, Loveland and Thornton. Jointness facilities meets the needs of Longmont citizens in a tremendously effective manner. I don't know if you're aware, with the pools during swim season... I don't know if you're aware, with the pools during swim season, so that's not even taking into consideration competitive swimmers throughout the year. High school students have to get up at an godly hour in the morning in order to practice before they put in a full day of study. And as far as an ice rink, we've had an overwhelming response with just our small, limited time use in Roosevelt Park, and any student presently who's involved with competitive ice activities, they must commute for both home and away games and practices. And in 2003, something that I always remember because they were two friends of my daughter, three young ladies in their sophomore year lost their lives driving back from Fort Collins from watching the Longmont Ice Team play up at Fort Collins. They were killed on I-25. So, I just want to bring that to the front of people's minds because when things are high school-related, you get a lot of high school kids going, but you also have a lack of experience on the road. So, to have something in our own community, we will safely address the needs of all our citizens. I appreciate your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Sharon. Paul Tiger? See him racing?
I didn't want to leave my book out there with all these skitties fingers around. Good evening. Paul Tiger, 634 Main Street. I think that I mentioned, I know I sent you guys an email, I just never remember anymore. And this was about campaign finance reform. This is not an election year for the city, so I think it's pretty important for us to look into the campaign finance reform issues that might be coming up. I know that I had a little chat with Eugene about whether or not the recent Supreme Court decision affects this municipality, and it may not. But next year and last year were not the years to look at election issues. So, a few years ago, when we had this task force, one of the things that occurred was that all of a sudden we were setting limits. But the task force, in its research, went back 14 elections, 28 years, and we couldn't find these massive amounts of money. It was one person who self-funded their own campaign for 12 grand. That's not a donation for 12 grand, that's self-funded. You all know what that means. You've got to pay yourselves back. Okay? So, anyway, I'm just, you know, coming down here, being friendly and saying, you know, next year, we can have an explosion, but let's kind of look at that stuff now. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. I'm Strider Dunston. I'm 51, 17th Avenue. As often, but far from always, I agree with Paul on this. Paraguay came up tonight. Little background, to understand Paraguay, you kind of have to know where it came from in the Triangle War in 1859 financed by Great Britain. They financed and armed Argentina, Brazil, and the eastern provinces to invade Paraguay. They destroyed 75% of the population of Paraguay. It took them 130 years to recover before they had their first civil democratic election in 1989. So, a piece of what's going on in the world. Two weeks ago, there was this Ku Klux Klan leader in Kansas. He hated black people and Jews, and so he murdered two Methodist and a Catholic. And then triumph, going off in the police car, he shouted, "Heil Hitler." This is an election year. That kind of stuff does happen in this country. The Nevada Governor saw this last week. Hundreds, maybe a thousand or more, came from all over the country to protect this grazing thief. But the man himself, the rancher, claimed ancestral rights, and he does not recognize that we have a country of federal government. He said he had ancestral grazing rights. Well, in fact, his ranch wasn't purchased until 1948, and they didn't start using the federal land until 1954. Governor Huckabee said that he would rather live in that career than that a renegade rancher should actually pay his grazing fees, although 20 years late. We could have had a massacre. Those snipers could have started opening fire, and we could have had another Waco. That is the kind of stuff that's going on. Today, Christine Todd Whitman, who was former Republican Governor of New Jersey and President Bush's EPA Secretary, spoke about planet change, and she's a Republican lifetime. She said, "You can't talk to Republicans because they don't read, and especially they don't read science." I'm serious about this. We have an election this year, a gerrymandered election in 2014. Please inform yourselves about the real issues if we are to survive as a society." Thank you.
Thank you, Strider. Okay, I guess I will start with ordinances on second reading.
Mayor, item 8A is ordinance 2014-16, the public hearing on ordinance making additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2014. There's no formal staff presentation, but Teresa Malloy is available if you have questions.
Okay. Any questions from council before I open up the public hearing? Okay, I'll open this up for public hearing on ordinance 82414-16. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak at this time? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on this item. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'd like to move ordinance 2014-16.
Second. Okay, it's been seconded by, I guess, the councilmember Santos. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor, the next item is 8B, ordinance 2014-17, a public hearing for an ordinance amending section 15.02.060 of the Longmont Municipal Code on amendments to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan. Again, there's no formal staff presentation, but Don Burchett is available if you have questions.
Okay, is there anybody from council who'd like to ask any questions before I open this up for public hearing? All right, I'll open this up for a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on ordinance 2014-17? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on ordinance 2014-17. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I'd like to move ordinance 2014-17.
Okay, it's been, motion's been made by Councilmember Finley and seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Let's vote. Okay, that passes seven to zero.
Mayor, the next item on your agenda is the consent agenda. Item 9A is 2014-19, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter 6.26 of the Longmont Municipal Code on cable television franchises. Public hearing in second reading scheduled for May 6, 2014. 9B is ordinance 2014-20, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter 15.06 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding downtown sign design standards. Public hearing in second reading scheduled for May 6, 2014. 9C, resolution 2014-39, a resolution of the Longmont City Council urging Longmont citizens to vote yes on ballot question 2A, issuing bonds payable from the city's storm drainage enterprise revenues to finance system-wide storm drainage capital improvements, including but not limited to St. Brain Creek drainage improvements on the June 24, 2014 special municipal election ballot. 9D is resolution 2014-40, a resolution of the Longmont City Council authorizing an agreement between the city and Stephen D. Tebow for the purchase of real property for the Ken Pratt and Main Street Intersection Improvement Project. Item 9E, resolution 2014-41, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement among the city of Longmont, the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, and Longspeak and Main LLC for public parking at Roosevelt Park Apartments. 9F is resolution 2014-42, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the United States of America for a transfer of entitlement to Federal Aviation Administration funds. Item 9G is resolution 2014-43, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for a lease of the Boulder County Fairgrounds parking lot for Rhythm on the River. Item 9H is resolution 2014-44, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the city of Boulder for the countywide homeless point-in-time count and survey collaboration agreement. 9I is resolution 2014-45, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the United States Marshal Service for Violent Offender Task Force Memorandum of Understanding. Item 9J is resolution 2014-46, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the city of Colorado Springs for an Internet Crimes Against Children grant. Item 9K, approved capital improvement program amendments D-43, PB-153, MUS-53, and MUS-151. And item 9L is a 2014 legislative update in support House Bill 141333, Senate Bill 14-179, and House Resolution 2084, and oppose House Bill 14-1375.
Good job. Okay, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Councilmember Robinson. Amongst the consent agenda is written into the record. Okay. Case been moved and seconded by Councilmember Christiansen. Let's vote. Thank you. I think it passes seven to zero. Now we're on to general business.
Mayor, item 11A is a citizen appeal on the February 19, 2014 Planning and Zoning Resolution, approving the 50-foot AT&amp;T Monopole Conditional Use Site Plan and 5-foot height exception at 820 Lashley Street, and Ben Ortiz is available to introduce his side.
Mayor Combs, members of council, my name is Ben Ortiz, planning the Department of Economic Development. The city received a conditional use site plan and height exception development application for a new signaling wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T 50-foot freestanding wireless telecommunications monopole to be installed within the Sunnyvale Self-Storage Facility at 820 Lashley Street. Because the application was a conditional use with a height exception, it had to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission took place on February 19th, at which the commission unanimously approved the AT&amp;T 50-foot monopole conditional use site plan and height exception without conditions. Randy, Patricia, and Melissa Blumenthal are appealing the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, stating that the commission's decision was an error for several reasons, one of which was lack of notification to residents in the immediate area. They argue that renters should have been provided written notice, but only property owners were notified. That said, before we can proceed to the public hearing, the City Council must make a formal finding on whether there was substantial compliance with the noticing requirements of the Land Development Code. According to section 1502.040h of the City of Longmont Land Development Code, when the provisions of this development code require written or mailed notice, notice shall be made to owners of any property located within 750 feet. There's no mention of noticing non-owners in the Land Development Code. For the above reason, the applicant was directed to get a mailing list from the Boulder County Assessor's Office of property owners living on the 750-foot perimeter of the Sunnyvale Self-Storage Facility, which they did, and they were directed to mail a notice of neighborhood meeting, the notice of application, and a notice of public hearing to everyone on that list, which they also did. In addition, they posted the property with a development application under review sign shortly after they submitted their application. Lastly, they posted a notice of public hearing 14 days in advance of the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing, which is also consistent with Land Development Code requirements. And that concludes my presentation on the noticing issue. And based on the recommended appeal procedure, which is included in attachment nine of your packet, the appellant is now allowed five minutes to present their position on the noticing issue, after which the applicant is allowed five minutes to present on the notice issue. After the appellant and applicant have had an opportunity to speak on this matter, the City Council must do one of two things. The first is to approve a motion finding that there was substantial compliance with the notice requirements of the Development Code, at which point the council should proceed with the hearing. And the second is that council should approve a motion finding that there was not substantial compliance with the notice requirements of the Development Code. In this circumstance, the council should approve a motion to deny the application and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of council a resolution making findings of facts supporting several of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision on the grounds of improper notice. And with that, I'm going to step back unless there are any other questions.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes, Mr. Ortiz, I have a question. You know, we did have an exceptional case where we, the city, provided notice, and you know, we don't have our same notice requirement that things get sent by certified mail. So, how do we actually know that anybody except for the appellants, who are property owners, actually received any of the notices? And when I also look at who showed up at the neighborhood meeting, when one person shows up at the neighborhood meeting, that to me does not say that a lot of, you know, we don't have any substantial facts that in fact property owners were, did receive, and I don't know if any of those mailings were returned to the city and if we kept any of them for, you know, addresses that were not deliverable.
Councilmember Robinson, we don't require certified mail. That's not something we've ever done in the past, and so...
Actually, it has been something we've done in the past.
To my knowledge, it is not something that I've ever done in the past, but, and I'm not aware of any planners that have done that, so I do apologize for that oversight. As with all mailings, mass mailings, you won't find a portion that will come back, and that was, that was in fact the case here. And it was, it was not a substantial number, but you know, it was, it was a few. So, we do know that the notices did go out, and it would be, you know, impossible to determine if they sent those notices only to those particular addresses that came back. They're obligated to use Boulder County Assessor's page. It's the most up-to-date information that we have. The City of Longmont Land Development Code specifically states owners, says nobody else. As an administrative code, I don't feel that I am at liberty to ask an applicant to do more than what is required of them within the Land Development Code.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question? How many, how many actually came back? I mean, when we talk about substantial number, you know, how many were sent out and how many came back?
Councilmember Robinson, I have an exact number. Several hundred that were sent back, and we received back maybe 10%, 15%.
Okay. So, at least we know 10% or 15% of the owners were not informed. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, next up is the appellant. Present now for five minutes.
I reside at 833 Lashley Street. And just to clarify, I was going through the legal file yesterday, and there was 167 mailings, and the mail, or the letter that we got came from, didn't come from the city, it came from Hood River, Oregon. So, just to let you guys know. And I understand that the Longmont Municipal Code mandates the property owners are to be notified regarding development applications, and that this is out of the scope of this appeal hearing, but I would like to question whose responsibility does it become to notify those residing on the premises but are not the property owner? I'm asking the council to consider a temporary moratorium on the ruling of wireless telecommunication facility applications until a stricter policy on a notification... facility applications until a stricter policy on the notification process is put into place.
Okay, the applicant can hear us speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Richard Bush, B-U-S-C-H, attorney for AT&amp;T Wireless in private practice from Hiscott, Washington. We believe that the record will show that the notice was given as required by code, and the applicant, the appellant actually said that this is outside the proceeding here, they asked for a moratorium, we don't think that's the appropriate remedy here. Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, we have to make a decision on whether or not substantial compliance with the notice requirement was met.
I'd just like to ask a, kind of a clarification question of a city attorney. I know the code says one thing, but if, if the, I don't know if there's a, if the intent of the code is that people, property owners would be informed, getting information, I don't know what the likelihood of someone who receives something that would be pertinent to their property in Longmont where they got a notice from out of state somewhere, whether or not that would be something that people would really know was pertaining to their property. And I know when we sent out, I mean, notices, when notices were sent out in the past, they're usually, they were sent out by the city, and so now it's just the applicant would, would send out the notice, and I just want to, you know, make sure that somehow people are clear when they get something in the mail, that it doesn't just look like junk mail to them. So I think that we've got a planner coming up to address that.
Mayor, council member Webison. So the notices that do go out are on city letterhead, and the return postmark is the city of Longmont address. So we do, we procure the information, do the notice for the applicant, send it to him, they mail it so that they pay for the postage, but we do require our return address so that we get those back, the ones that aren't delivered. So they, it's pretty clear that it's coming from the city, is my point.
Thank you. Congressman Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move that there is substantial compliance with the notice requirements of the Development Code, and the council should proceed with the hearing.
Case been moved and seconded. Congressman Gregory.
Thank you, Mayor, I was just going to, I was just, a couple of questions, actually another question, I just might give some thoughts. We rely, in my profession, we rely on the US mail constantly. If you took away, I mean, it's just a presumption that once you stick it in the mail, it gets there. And if we, as attorneys and courts, and if we didn't trust the US mail system, you know, we'd never get anything done. So I don't have a problem trusting the mail system, especially when we've got 167 that are going out, they come back, and, and I think also that regardless of whether or not we think that it's appropriate, currently the law is that we mail it out to property owners, and I personally don't think that we should change it, simply because, again, I've said it before, I'm a believer in capitalism. If I own property and somebody says, hey, this is going up next to you, I am the one that's going to respond, not the person living there, because I want to make sure that I protect my investment and so forth, so I think we should just vote for it and get on with the hearing.
Well, there's sent out about 167 W2s, and about 15 or 16 of them come back because people don't give you updated addresses, so it's kind of common, that's a typical thing. So, Congressman Christian.
I, I do think that there was compliance, I do think that there are several problems that it would be good to address, and one of them is, we had a problem with certifiable letters recently with another situation, and I do think that we should return to having these things sent out as certified letters, even though it costs a little bit more, it prevents problems in the long run. And if we follow those up, I think we have an obligation to try with something like this, to follow up anything that was returned, to try to find that property owner. Anyway, another situation is the people who live there are the ones who actually have to cope with this, and I do think renters have some sort of rights, especially because we're going to have more people renting in the future, unfortunately for them, and, and I think they also have some rights, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, we're getting way ahead of this hearing. We're not even close to where the motion is. None of what is being spoke about is germane to the motion. So we need to focus on the motion, get to the opening presentations of the staff, the applicant, and the appellant. We're, you guys are leap year, you know, minutes way ahead of, in making decisions before any, anything is being discussed.
All right, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, it's time to vote. That passes seven to zero. Okay, so now the staff's going to make a, another presentation, and...
Mayor, members of council, freestanding wireless telecommunications facilities are regarded as conditional uses. This means that an application for a freestanding wireless telecommunications facility cannot be approved administratively. Conditional uses require approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. The AT&amp;T application also included a height exception. The maximum structure height in the commercial zoning district is 45 feet, the proposed monopole is 50 feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission also had to approve the 5-foot height exception. Because the project is a conditional use and because it included a height exception, the applicant was required to hold the neighborhood meeting in advance of submitting their application. One member from the public attended that meeting. The neighborhood meeting summary is included in Attachment 2 of your packet. Things like aesthetics, the monopole, and health impacts were discussed amongst other things. Sunnyvale Self-Storage is zoned commercial. The properties immediately to the south and east are zoned R3, or high-density residential. The property to the north is zoned commercial, and the properties to the west across Lashley are zoned R2, or medium-density residential. The proposed monopole would be about 135 feet from the condominiums to the south, and 300 feet from the condominiums to the east. The residential properties to the west across Lashley Street are approximately 250 feet away from the proposed location of the monopole. A public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission took place on February 19th, the commission approved the Conditional Use Site Plan and Height Exception for the AT&amp;T monopole with a vote of seven to zero. Only one member from the public, Melissa Blumentine, spoke at the public hearing. She and two other members of her family are the appellants in this matter. Throughout the development application review process, staff received no comments from the surrounding neighborhood. The appellants are arguing that the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission was an error for several reasons. The first argument relates to inappropriate site selection, poor visual appeal, and general incompatibility with the character of mostly surrounding residential neighborhood. Second, they argue that the application was incomplete. Third, they argue that there will be adverse impacts on health associated with the monopole operations. And lastly, they argue that the neighborhood was inappropriately noticed. As the notice issue has been settled by council, we'll focus only on the appellant's first three arguments. The first argument relates to improper site selection, and that the project is inappropriate due to poor visual appeal and general incompatibility with the character of mostly surrounding residential neighborhood. AT&amp;T has received a number of complaints from cell customers in the surrounding vicinity of the Sunnyvale Self-Storage Facility due to the lack of coverage. To address this, they looked at alternative locations, including co-locating on a nearby cell structure, but that structure was already full. They also looked at co-locating on existing buildings, but there weren't any tall enough in the immediate area that would work. So when I was reviewing the application, I had several things in mind when pondering the issue of compatibility. The first is that a self-storage facility which the monopole will be located is somewhat different from residential development, both in terms of use and form. The second is that most people use cell phones, and a large number of people in the area would benefit from the placement of the tower and the increased, increased cell provision. The third is that the tower would not increase noise or traffic. The fourth is that if the owner of the Sunnyvale Self-Storage Facility wanted to strip the storage facility, put up a 45-foot tall building for uses that are permitted in the commercial zoning district, he could do that without Planning and Zoning Commission approval, and the visual impacts of a 45-foot tall building to surrounding residents would be far greater than the proposed monopole. Lastly, we could have asked AT&amp;T to disguise the monopole in the form of, say, a monopine, which is a monopole dressed up to look like a pine tree, but that would have added both height and breadth to the monopole, which would have increased the visual obstruction of the facility. And for this reason, I felt that the design as proposed was as good as we were going to get. The second argument is that the application was incomplete because only a black and white printout of a similar monopole was provided by the applicant at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing. Before an applicant submits an application, they attend a pre-application conference at which the applicant outlines the process and goes over everything that the applicant needs to submit for their application. The applicant provided everything that was asked for. Now, in advance of the public hearing, I asked the applicant to be prepared to provide things like photos, sins, as well as speak to the review criteria to better assist the Planning and Zoning Commission in coming to a decision. While I didn't do either at the public hearing, it has no bearing on the completeness of their application. And the last argument of the appellant is that there would be adverse impacts on health to the surrounding residents associated with the monopole operations. When staff reviews telecommunications applications, we don't consider environmental effects because the localities are prohibited from regulating wireless telecommunications facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions, to the extent that the facilities comply with commission's regulations concerning such emissions. The specific federal code that speaks to this is provided for you in the communication. And that concludes my presentation on the staff report. That said, I'd like to direct your attention again to Attachment 9, which is the recommended appeal procedure, which should be followed for the remainder of this item. Thank you, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Is there any questions at this point? Okay, so next, the appellant gets a 15-minute...
The first part I would like to make is in regards to compliance with the application, with the, or, to compliance with the application requirements for a Conditional Use Site Plan per the Land Development Code. The applicant did provide three alternative sites, being Centennial Park, Kensington Park, and a one-story building to the north of the proposed site, which I believe is 711. However, in the Longmont Municipal Code, Section 15.05.170, wireless telecommunications facilities, it states, "The applicant shall explore all potential options for locating a facility on an existing building or structure prior to submitting an application for a freestanding facility." During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on February 19th, 2014, Commissioner Dunn asked Mr. Ortiz what the process was for noting all, for noting that all potential avenues were in fact explored. Mr. Ortiz responded, and I quote, "Chairman Dunn, while regrettably I will have to state that I failed to request that information from them," the applicant, "when they came in for a pre-application conference, so I do not have an answer for that," which shows that the application is not compliant. I know of several locations that could have been considered, including Intermountain Railway at 30 East 9th Avenue, 3 East 9th Avenue, 400 Lashley Street, and the Sugar Mill, all of which are two-story, at least two-story buildings, and are within 1.2 miles of the proposed site. The fact that AT&amp;T failed to explore all potential avenues prior to submitting an application for a freestanding facility should be grounds for denial regardless of the avenues explored since this appeal. As a cellphone user, I understand the importance of these towers and advancing technology, and I'm not opposed to having these facilities. A temporary moratorium on cell tower permit approvals would allow the city time to analyze and decide where and under what conditions towers are to be approved. The aesthetics of these towers is not the issue, the concern is for the members of our community. There is clear evidence of risk, but how high the health risks are is unknown. Decades of research have found alarming effects, radiation exposure, the effects of radiation exposure on humans. These include numerous cancers, birth defects, mutations, altered blood chemistry, behavioral aberrations, just to name a few. Studies have shown links to autism and learning disabilities, as children are most vulnerable. Industry representatives will often point out that the RF emissions of cellular towers are far below the federal standards, which they often are. They liken the power output of the technology to 100 and even 25 watt light bulbs, hoping to mitigate people's fears with similar comparisons. What they leave out is that the 100, is 100 is the power output per channel, and one in 10 may host dozens of channels. The impacts of cellphone towers on human health can be compared to the history of dealing with the hazards of smoking decades ago, where the power of the industry is to influence governments and even conflicts of interest within the public health community, delayed action for more than a generation, with consequential and substantial loss of life and unnecessary healthcare costs to society. I would like to mention the guidelines from which your decision is based, from which your decision is based from the Telecommunications Act of 1996, a document that was written 18 years ago. Many municipal agents incorrectly interpret Section 704 of this act, assuming that since they cannot factor health into their final decisions, they therefore, they therefore cannot broach the subject at all. Technologies have come a long way, and so have concerns for our health, have our standards. It is the city's job, according to the Land Development Code, to promote the public health, safety, convenience, comfort, prosperity, and general welfare of its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, so now the applicant gets to present.
Um, and I'd like to add something to the record, if that's okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go to heart.
So who's this?
It's a bit familiar.
Is this what we have? Is this from...
Okay, okay. Should be an on button there somewhere?
At once, there we go, thank you very much. Also, from a procedural standpoint, I do have additional documents to be introduced in the record, you don't have this yet. We do have enough copies for all of the, the mayor and council members. Thank you. I have your, my presentation. The power... Okay, in summary, what I'd like to discuss tonight is that AT&amp;T agrees with the staff presentation. We think staff has done a commendable job working with us to develop the proposal to the extent that you have before you today. We think the Planning and Zoning Commission made the right decision based upon the evidence before it. Second, we do, we already covered the proper notice section, so we'll skip through that. Third, we believe the application complies with all the city code requirements. And finally, we don't believe there's any other reason for denial of the application. Concerning the, the application complying with the code, this is a Conditional Use Permit application, and the Conditional Use Permit criteria are summarized here. You look through the lists, and it's a standard list of what you'd expect to see from any Condition Use, whether it's a wireless communications facility, cement factory, a recycling center, anything like that, we go through the same criteria. Traffic, adequate facilities, water, sewer power, and so on, the staff has done an excellent job in describing it. Usually, the big discussion when it comes to wireless communications facilities relates to the compatibility with the surrounding area. And the compatibility elements are the, the third bullet and the subbullets underneath there. When you take a look at the surrounding neighborhood and existing uses, the surrounding neighborhood is on commercial property, and adjacent to it to the north is additional commercial property. You do have residential on the east, south, and then west across the street, but it's going to be located not at the edge, but in the center of the commercial property, and they will have it in one set of storage bays from the exterior row of storage base, so it'll be more difficult, if not impossible, to see as you're driving down the road or walking down the road, or pulling into the parking lot for the, the businesses that are at the front of the street. So we think that it's compatible with the other commercial type uses in the area. Second, as far as mitigating potential adverse impacts on land uses and the environment, when it comes to land uses, the proposed facility will have no impact on the surrounding commercial use or residential use. If the site is built, the people in the surrounding area will still be able to use their property for residential purposes. their property for residential purposes. It will not have any impact at all on it. It will not bring dust, it will not bring debris that makes it difficult to maintain your property. The next item, scale, how does this compare with the other uses in the area? The scale is a tall, slender structure. You'll see pictures of it later on in the presentation. As staff mentioned, a permitted use in this area is a forty-five-foot-tall building. This covers up a good portion of the entire property. So this this visual impact of the facility is less than what could be installed under permitted use today. Other uses that are permitted with certain conditions would be a hotel or a hospital well, as well, which would be a more intrusive use. Finally, the rest of these deal with architectural style, building materials. It's a monopole. It will be metallic in appearance, and the existing storage units are metallic finish throughout the entire area. The height exception, we're, good title, Rich, didn't edit that. We are asking for a five-foot exception to the forty-five-foot limit. The radio frequency engineers have run their models based upon the fifty-feet height required at the site, which is why the twenty-feet tall, the buildings which are twenty feet tall in the area will not suffice. Whether it's right at the adjacent property where it's the mark or the stores, it doesn't work, it's too low. And if you go a mile and a half away or a mile away to another facility that's twenty feet tall, going on top of that isn't going to work. So it's necessary to provide coverage in the area. Benefits to neighborhood, staff has talked about this, bringing wireless communications facilities, better quality wireless communications facilities to the neighborhood, we think is benefits to the community. Does comply with all the other regulations, parking and so on. Compatibility, we just talked about that. The ones that we should talk about are solar and visual access. That's a unique requirement of this particular height variance request that we're making. The structure will not block solar access, and because it's so narrow and distant from the homes, it's not going to block visual access. In addition, from the street and the homes across the street to the west where the appellants live, there are trees and power lines that are in between the proposed site and where the appellants live. And from the vantage point ground level, looking across the street, the visual profile of the power lines are taller than what the visual impact would be of the distant, more distant wireless communication facilities. So it'll be taller when you take a look at the the power lines there. And finally, the rest of the exception criteria, we think have been satisfied. Okay, the issues raised by the appellate, we've discussed that briefly. The health concerns, Telecommunications Act, if the carrier demonstrates that it's going to comply with the FCC's requirements, which we have, there's a letter from an RF engineer in the file. Then you can take testimony, but you can't base your decision upon the environmental impacts, including health of the facility. Site selection, this is probably where we should talk in greater detail. Why do we need new sites? Why this area? Why this site? Okay? This chart could be updated to show a higher percentage from two thousand and six to twenty twelve. Mobile data usage on AT&amp;T's network is around thirty thousand percent. If you count twenty thirteen, fifty thousand percent. In nineteen eighty-six, when we all had the brick phones, or some of us had the brick phones, if you were to sit at the Broncos stadium and try to make a phone call, you probably could, because at that many people were competing for channels. But if you were to go back there today and try to take a video clip and email it to somebody, or even make a phone call, without dense, dense additional construction, additional infrastructure, that call will not go out. And the same story is playing out around the communities. People are using their wireless phones for data purposes more and more, and this is projected to continue, which is why AT&amp;T is proposing to build additional sites with additional frequencies to provide enough capacity throughout your community so no one's disadvantaged with access to wireless, high-speed wireless communication services. Okay, right in this area, there's a propagation map attached to the letter from the RF engineers in your hands. If you go to page four of what you just received, this is also in the materials on the chart here, and I think you have it in the staff report. This is what the coverage looks like today at the high-speed 4G LTE frequencies and technology. The arrow shows the proposed site, Lashley Street, C O L O O O one-one, proposed site. If it's white, that means that there's inadequate quality of service. If it's green, that means that there's adequate quality of service. The gap extends is on the west side of the proposed site, and the east side and the southeast side. So the radio frequency engineers ran the model, and on the next page, you see more And if this proposed site is activated, that is where you will have high-quality wireless communication services to all people indoors in that area. Now, on the monitor, this is a picture of the search ring that the radio frequency engineers identified if we're going to provide this quality of service in this geographic area. That's why the focus was right here. There was some discussion about the Sugar Mill site. The Sugar Mill site is a mile-plus away to the south-southeast, and we'll see in a minute that that just doesn't provide adequate coverage in this area. Why this particular site now? The code priorities are existing building or existing structure, and we've talked about that. There are no five-story buildings in this search ring that we can mount the antennas to at the top, four-star, fifty-foot or forty-five-foot tall. Second is a co-location on an existing wireless communication structure, and the third is commercial, which is where we are. The alternate sites we considered are the buildings, like I said, are too low, twenty feet plus or minus. Residential structure is not allowed, so we're not going to go on top of an apartment or a condominium that may have a little bit more height than what the the commercial properties are. And we looked at three other alternatives. The first is a program pilgrim tower. It's a light-duty tower, it's a lattice tower. It doesn't, it will not structurally support the equipment that AT&amp;T wants to put at the top. And then the available radiation center, RAD center is what we call it, toward the bottom is at thirty feet, which is not high enough to get the coverage that we need. Other alternate sites are the two parks, Kensington and Centennial Park. It would be a new site build, so we would be going through the same process with whomever is adjacent to the parks. And the reality is that the city's code does not encourage us from putting the priorities parks. So we have to go through the existing hierarchy before we're allowed to go into the parks. And we are at the commercial property, which is why we're here tonight talking about the commercial property. Sugar Mill is over a mile away, and this is, again, you've seen this before, this is what it looks like today, and this is with the Sugar Mill site. And it's in the lower right-hand corner, the dot where the Sugar Mill site is located, and it does not reach the area where we want to provide coverage. I'm going to go back, flip back and forth. You can see that the Sugar Mill site will not reach all the way to the desired coverage area, which is why we're not considering that. I'm going to entertain questions at any point in time, so don't hesitate to interrupt me.
Okay, and I'm a RF engineer for thirty years of my career, so I understand exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Me too.
Did you want to come up here? Tell me about the frequencies.
Good later.
Okay, we'll get back, we'll just skip it now. Now, the reason why it's not making it very far is that we're using the higher frequencies, the nineteen hundred, twenty-one hundred megahertz frequencies. The old frequencies that were issued back in the nineteen eighties, the eight-hundred-and-fifty megahertz, they travel further. I think your police departments at one time used and may continue to use seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-fifty megahertz frequencies. The signals travel far, you don't need that many towers around the community. The signal broadcasts into buildings, penetrates buildings well. When the SEC started allocating the other licenses, nineteen hundred, they don't travel very far. So we'll need a lot more sites in order to cover the neighborhoods than we had with just the eight-hundred-and-fifty megahertz sites. Okay, appearance and compatibility, we've talked about this quite a bit already. These are the photo sims. This is taken from, this is before. This is taken from across the street to the west from the site, that is the storage facility. The tallest part of it is up front. So we're looking east across the street from the southern portion of the property. And if the tower is installed, it will be at certain vantage points behind the tree. But if you go further north up to where the intersection is, where you see the light pole, I'm sure you will see it above the roof of the building there. But it's a two-story building with probably a five, six, seven-foot peak, and so it's going to be covered for most of the structure from that vantage point. This is taken about one block north, and we're looking past the seven-eleven. The facility, the storage facility, is at the right side, and if the site is installed, that is how it would appear from that vantage point. And then finally, this is closer to the appellant's property, but I don't believe it's directly in front of the appellant's property. This is the before shot, and this is the after shot. It's clearly visible. It will be visible, the upper portion is visible, but the lower portion is going to be blocked from most of the angles from the street. We think it's, the mitigation is that it is on the center of the property. The setbacks are greater than one-to-one, which is a requirement of the code. It's a fifty-foot-tall structure, it has to be more than fifty feet away. And you see the distances for the nearest residences. The nearest property on the north is commercial, and it will not impact the use of commercial or residential properties. I went too far. And finally, as far as the other conversations we've had, we believe that the application was complete. The maintenance of the facility, there was some questions raised about maintenance, how it would appear. This is a galvanized steel tower. There were some concerns expressed about whether it would appear rusted over time. The electric utility industry uses a different type of tower than we do. That encourages rust, and it doesn't cause it to structurally fail, it's just a different type, we don't use that. The question about the schools being a distance away, that's not a part of the code criteria, so we don't think that's an appropriate standard to apply. And then RF compliance, we've already talked about, the facility will comply with the FCC regulations. The material from the RF engineer just talks about what we summarized in the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer those.
Any questions? No, I think we're good. So is there anybody from the public that'd like to speak at this time that can speak for three minutes, that there's anybody from the public? Okay, if not, that's only if someone, yeah, so now we basically can make our decision. Okay, so now it's time for council for us to discuss this and make a decision.
Can I ask a procedural question? Doesn't the appellant have a right to do a rebuttal of any of the comments that the applicant had?
I don't think so.
And counsel, if you look at your recommended appeal procedures, the rebuttal would be if there was testimony during the public hearing portion.
And there was.
Not hear any. I do have one question, and that was about the material submitted by the appellant at the end of her presentation. I'm not sure that the applicant had a chance to review, and if he has any objections to it being entered into the record.
I have that hand a chance to review the additional material. I have no objections to it going in the record, I'd just like to have a copy for files.
All right. Can you further discussion from the council? Councilor Rosen.
Yeah, I have a question. If the, I know that the Y across the street is a pretty tall building, why wouldn't the siding of a tower go on top of the Y? Since we were talking about, that's one of the criteria, and I don't understand why that was eliminated.
For some reason, I think it's western.
Actually, I guess that question was to the applicant. I guess we're allowed to ask questions to the applicant?
Yeah.
If it's procedurally appropriate, the YMCA isn't that tall, it's a, it's still about a two-story structure max, so it's at the twenty-foot level plus or minus. So putting the antennas directly on the structure would not work.
Okay. Oh, so you wouldn't mount it on top of the building? Because anyway, the commercial property will further down with another cell phone tower installation actually on top of like a one-and-a-half-story building.
I have seen some of those. I think they raise challenging structural engineering problems if the building isn't either originally engineered to handle the weight, the wind loading, the ice loading of a new structure on top versus, you know, you have, it has to be transferred all the way down to the foundation, and usually you don't find an existing building that has that kind of capacity. So we thought being on the commercial property where we are today was something that's easier to achieve, and both from an engineering standpoint as well as integrating it into the community. If it was across the street, on top of that building, frankly, a lot of this is visual impact, and I think my personal opinion is that a monopole on top of a building is rather awkward.
Would be more aesthetically, would be aesthetically unpleasant.
What we look for, what I look for, we work with jurisdictions to modify codes, talk about public policy questions, and we also work with the AT&amp;T on land use applications. What I encourage jurisdictions to do if they're going to change their code, think about what fits with the community, what is visually integrated with the community. And when you have a monopole on top of a building, it's just not something that you see going down the road. But if you see a monopole set back where the lower two-thirds is sheltered from view, you don't know what's going on down below, it's better integrated into the community. Also, there's more trees along that side of the road. If I recall correctly from touring the site last week, there are no trees that would block the view of the facility as you look over toward the YMCA, it would be just right there in all its glory.
Thank you.
But it's a good question, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't find a reason for denial. I mean, all the steps have been followed. So with that, I move the, I move that we uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission decision approving the AT&amp;T wireless fifty-foot-tall monopole conditional use site plan and height exception.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Councilor Blackley?
From Mayor Williams, there's a lot of times when I'm standing before a judge, and I don't agree with the decision, but the judge has to apply the laws written. I have to read the packet. What I hear is, based on what I saw tonight, you know, I think that the site selection is appropriate, as you look, it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, you know, the seven-elevens, the, I mean, the little pictures we saw. I think that it's no, it might have poor visual appeal, but it's not necessarily incompatible. There's a lot of things sticking up in the air, utility poles, signage, lights. So I think that on number, factor number one, you know, I think that the applicant meets that criteria. I also think that the application may have been incomplete, but we're seeing tonight additional pictures, et cetera. I also think that number three, again, the law is that it just has to be the property owners, not runners. And number four, I'm concerned as well about the health impacts. However, according to federal law, you know, that was provided to us, thirty-seven USC, Section three thirty-two C seven B, you know, in the minimum four, essentially, that's not our purview. And I read through the studies, and there was one paragraph in there that said there haven't been enough studies done, and encourages people to do so. So I understand that there's some concern, but I also think that the criteria as presented have been met. And so I'm going to also vote that we approve the, approve the tower location.
I guess I have a question for staff about the overall height of the building and where it is as relates to the property line. If, and the applicant is the one who actually made me think about this just now, when he talked about, you know, the pole being secured and not being, was on top of the building, maybe not secured structurally well enough. If this monopole would get blown down or choked with ice and fall, what would it hit?
Councilor Rosen, the Land Development Code requires that the setback be either equal to the setback requirements for structures in that particular zoning district, or the facility height, whichever is greater. So in this case, the facility is fifty feet, and they are at least that far away from the nearest property line. So it would fall on one of the, one of the self-storage units.
Or fall in, and how is it going to be shielded? Since we couldn't actually get, we didn't really have a picture of where it is in relation to all the self-storage unit buildings, is it going to be, is it possible that somebody with a moving truck is going to like structurally damage it, or will there be a big cage around the base to protect it? damage it, or will there be a big cage around the base to protect it?
Councilman Rosen, they're going to be putting that power directly through one of the storage facilities, and they'll also be including, so it's going to come up through one of the storage facilities, and they're also going to be putting all their ground equipment within existing storage facilities. So a truck that does that would have to go through one of the storage units. To my knowledge, that's never happened there.
Okay, so it's basically, they're going to take a storage unit that already has a building around it, and put the basic structure inside that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. That wasn't really obvious from the pictures or any of the documentation. Before we vote on this, I do want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I commend the applicant for gathering all the information and having the courage to show up here tonight, and frankly, the courage to show up at planning and zoning with some information. I recognize that it's very difficult to do, and over many years of being involved with planning and zoning issues in the city, there have been a number of these issues, and there's always been a member of the public who comes and talks about the inequity of locating these structures in neighborhoods where there are high rental units. Because people that are lit, actually living there, and many of them are long-term renters of small houses or apartments, they have no idea what's going on, and basically, they have no stakeholder interest except through their landlord. And if their landlord doesn't want to step forward, they have the stronger voice, and I think that it's absolutely commendable for you, Ms. Blumenstein, to come forward and mention everything you do, you did tonight. And I think that is a concern moving forward, because when you look at neighborhoods that are rental, a lot of times they are people with less means and less ability to come forward, and may not be aware of what's happening in their surroundings. And maybe what that means to change their location, I know that, you know, we all tout the free market, and say, well, you know, if you don't like what's next to you, just move, but sometimes people don't have a choice to move. And, you know, they've been established somewhere as a long-term renter. One thing that I would also encourage you, Ms. Blumenstein, to do is to continue to follow this issue. Right now, Congress is taking up the rewrite of the Telecommunications Act of 1996, they're going for rulemaking, and that's being taken up by the Commerce Committee in Congress. So I would hope that after we get finished with this issue, that sometime the council can review what's happening with that rulemaking, and then be more engaged in some of this issue with the health and safety issues, and have some input on that rulemaking. Just, you know, we missed out on rulemaking when it came to train noise, and we've had a miserable, almost 10 years with increased train noise, and it'd be nice to be involved in rulemaking, that might make things better in our community. So I just encourage everybody to come forward and let your voice be heard.
Well, I would like to add a little bit of a comment about, you know, everybody's always concerned about power densities, how healthy, and I know we're not supposed to rule on, but, you know, if they're within the SEC standards, and that's measured, you know, like, right at the base of the tower, it's caught 50 feet from the emitters, as you go 100 feet from the emitters, you double the distance, the power density decreases by factor four. If you go 200 feet, it's going to decrease by factor 16, and 400 feet, where most of these houses, you know, it's 1/32nd is the power density, because the energy spreads uniformly, so it goes down, you know, doubling the distance, the power density goes down by, it's square root of the factor. So, you know, we don't have answers for that, but, you know, we're not actually allowed to use that, and it's part of our criteria for voting tonight, but it is a fact of physics that the further you get away from the radiation emitter of this, the, you know, it's not a linear, but it's a square root of all relationship in how the power density is going down. So anyway, I guess it's time to vote.
Now, if I could, before you go, a couple of just procedural housekeeping matters, and then sort of one comment on the motion. In the recommended procedures, there is an option for public hearing, I want to make sure council recognize that, made deliberate decision to not do that.
We had a public hearing.
We did? Okay, staff was informing me, you didn't. For rebuttal, that is an option of council, if they wanted to allow it, I didn't want to imply that it was not permitted. It would be required if any additional evidence was presented during the public hearing portion, but that is an option of council. Finally, on the motion, the Telecommunications, Telecommunications Act requires a written decision, staff will prepare a resolution in the packet, and I believe the motion just upheld the P and Z decision, if you could, as a suggestion, incorporate Resolution A, which is finding the fact on upholding the decision.
Yeah, if the person will second, will agree with the amendment? Okay. All right, so let's vote. Okay, pass the seven to zero.
Thank you, Mayor. The one, now that that hearing is over, I do have one thing I would like to address, notification to renters. This is the second time that I, that this has actually come up, and so I'm looking at planning staff. And it's not only regarding this topic, but I had a property manager ask me a question that when, regarding this, but also when a code enforcement violation comes in, now again, now that we're done with this topic, that's why I waited, when a code enforcement violation comes in, it goes to the owner of the property. Property owner, again, property manager came up to me and said, why can't it go to the renter? So in this situation, is there a way that it goes to the property owner, but is there a way that we can try to figure out a way that it would also, we can have some sort of requirement that we also get some sort of notification that gets to the renter? That's something that we might need to discuss at a later date, but if staff can just chew on that for a little while.
Mayor Coombs, Councilman Santos, we certainly can take a look at that. With regard to code, obviously, they have one off, so that's a lot easier for them. However, there are instances, you know, with the county, when they send out, like, foreclosure information, they usually send something to the renter and to the owners. So as we're looking at code updates and looking at notifications, we'll certainly take that into account, because that would still be within the applicant paying the cost of noticing, as opposed to the city.
Exactly.
So we'll take a look at that.
Just take a look, and I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Can't deal with it now, but later. Thanks.
Okay, do you guys want to take a quick break, or do you want to continue? All right, let's press on.
Mayor, the next slide among your agenda is consideration of possible action regarding a new agreement for economic development services between the city and LAEC. Shawn Lewis will present.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Shawn Lewis, Assistant City Manager. I wanted to start by showing you the slide that you guys have seen a couple of times, but just to remind you where we have come from and where we are at this point. Back in December, you may remember that Avalanche Consulting, Amy Holloway, came and presented information with regard to the first of four components of the Target Industry Analysis, which is a plan to really provide a vision, a strategic plan for economic development, not just for the city, but for the entire community. So in that process, of course, there was a lot of data, a lot of the stakeholder input, a number of focus groups, a lot of market data that was analyzed, as well as a SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, summary. In January, the second phase was the Target Industry Analysis. That involved a cluster analysis, the target industry list, and then in April, there was a reverse site selection process. We do not yet have that report, those are simply just recommendations on how we physically intake prospects into the community, what information we give to them, what meetings that we set up for them, for folks to meet with. It's not, it's really kind of an add-on component to this contract. And then later on in April, you all heard earlier this month, Amy, with regards to the implementation plan. And that includes, you know, the vision for the community, those overall goals, and the strategies and tactics, as well as the third component of that implementation plan, which is an organizational assessment. And you may recall that, of course, that that organizational assessment, as we mentioned back in December, was basically a third of one-fourth of the overall plan. I know it's gotten quite a bit of attention, and so I just wanted to kind of go over that organizational assessment and where we are today. So you may recall that city administration requested that that draft assessment be presented to you in January. The reason why we wanted to do that was to make sure that any organizational changes that were being proposed, we kind of had a, had at least a good guess of where we were going organizationally before we started developing strategies, implementation tactics, et cetera. At that time, the recommendation that came out of that organizational assessment was to consolidate the economic development efforts that were jointly being conducted by both the city and LAEC, and consolidate those within LAEC. However, due to a need for you all to review a new contract with LAEC, we need to get your feedback and in your direction with regard to how to go with that. So on January 28th, the city council did authorize staff to begin to investigate, as well as discuss and negotiate with LAEC on what a potential agreement could look like. Again, you were not voting for the contract that's in front of you tonight, you were simply authorizing us to investigate and begin negotiations to see if an agreement could be reached. There are two qualifiers that you put on city staff as we entered into those negotiations. The first was that no city programs or services would be cut in any potential consolidation. The second was that LAEC must agree to provide, excuse me, LAEC must provide for two City of Longmont-appointed seats on the LAEC board, just so that we would have a greater voice, the city would, within that board. So in terms of the recommendations that are in that organizational assessment, there are really kind of two parts. The first one that you're looking at tonight requires council approval, expanding the scope of LAEC to include the services that are currently provided by the city. That, as I mentioned earlier, requires council approval. The other three recommendations require the city manager to authorize those, as well as, in some cases, LAEC to sign off on, if they have a particular component. Those other three, which we're not going to spend a lot of time on tonight, include creating a Department of Planning and Development Services to better focus our efforts on the business climate here in Longmont. Three, to create processes for regular communication and cooperation between LAEC, as well as the Planning and Development Services Department, and the city in general. And then number four, designate an official City of Longmont liaison to the LAEC board and staff, which currently, we don't have that official liaison. But again, going back to that first recommendation with regard to consolidating with LAEC, there are four or five kind of problem areas that the consulting firm identified as they interviewed nearly 100 different folks from the community, the staff at the city economic development programs, the staff at the city manager's office, the staff and board members of LAEC, as well as some of you. And in that process of developing that, and looking at how we're structured, comparing this to other benchmark cities, these are some of the things that were revealed in that assessment. First of all, that Longmont lacks a front door for economic development. First of, problem there being that there's really no centralized place that a business can go. For instance, as you know, the primary employers are handled by LAEC, non-primary, particularly small business, are handled by the City of Longmont. So what happens there is that there is confusion within the business community regarding who does what. So as an example of that, LAEC very commonly receives requests from developers with regard to retail development and redevelopment. And secondly, they also receive requests from small businesses, saying, how can you support me even though I'm not a primary employer? And so there's confusion there just by the amount of calls and inquiries we have from, to these organizations. The second one is on the city side, that primary employers also, on a regular basis, contact city staff with regard to relocation services. So essentially, they're prospects that should be handled by LAEC, but don't know where to go, and so they go to the city. So what the consultant identified is that this incorrect kind of initial contact with the city creates an opportunity to basically reject that person by referring them to someone else, telling them that we can't help them, and that that creates a negative first impression. And also, particularly with site selectors that deal with communities all over the US, does give a sense that we have a slightly more, it's just not, it looks like we don't have a coordinated effort here in Longmont, because we do have two organizations handling something with similar mission and vision, which actually is the next slide, the next area of concern, that having the current structure that we have now does create two, essentially, lead organizations, at least on the public side, with regard to economic development. And that has led to really not having a shared vision, that you're studying to see coming out of the Target Industry Analysis, the entire report hopefully will give us that shared mission and vision, but how each organization interprets that mission and vision, and kind of applies it to themselves, has led to really differing perspectives of community needs, resulting in different goals, strategies, and action plans, when really, we all have the same end goal, but we're going about it in different ways that is not to the community's benefit. So as you know, the city's vision and focus is primarily based, as I mentioned, on small business, and retail, and LAEC's vision, again, based primarily on primary employers. The third area of concern with the current structure is that there is, this structure has created confusion between the city and LAEC, specifically that the role overlap between various staff members in both organizations has really led to an unhealthy competition, and certainly, poor communication. At times, I would say historically, from everything that we can see, but even in the year and a half that I've been here, certainly, Winnie Naxinger, who has been with LAEC for many years, and her experiences as well, that specifically, city staff have worked with primary employers without involving LAEC in that, those contacts. And sometimes, when they have worked with those employers, it has been too late in the game, where it should be very soon at the beginning of that process. Secondly, the LAEC staff has also not shared information with the City of Longmont regarding the potential loss, loss of recruitment of primary employers. And again, there are examples, even within the last six months, that we have collected with regard to this. So staff surveys, the second point in terms of the role confusion between the city and LAEC, is that staff surveys of city staff reveal that there is role confusion, and that there is a spread of competition that exists within even our own organization. And so, you know, I think that we can agree that in an open market, the free market competition is a good thing, but when you're in a city, you don't want your own agencies and organizations that you have competing with one another in any way, shape, or form. And thirdly, that recent improvements that have been made with the relationship and the communication between the city and the LAEC have really been based more on personality than they have been on good contracts, a good organizational structure. And last but not least, and we would be negligent in providing our opinion, as well as the consultant's opinion, that while effectiveness, having the most effective economic development program we can have is the number one goal of everything, the fact that our current system is not as efficient as it could be is also a concern, particularly with regard to fiscal efficiency. We do believe that there is overlapping, there's an overlap in job descriptions, particularly between top executives in economic development in both organizations, and also similar skill sets that exist between the staffs of both organizations, and therefore, you have duplicative operational functions, as well as budget needs that occur in both organizations, but because they're in two organizations, there is some overlap there. So moving on to some of the examples, again, that the consultant provided us, this is a graphic that the consultant uses in communities all over the US, that really is the modern interface with regard to providing economic development services. With public sector, and the public sector organization providing that business climate, the permitting, the planning, the zoning, the different things that make up a healthy business climate, as well as, excuse me, your infrastructure, your CIP program, your capital improvements, and then quality of life issues that really make a big difference when a company is looking at expanding in your own community, or coming into your community, as well as, how does that quality of life, and your housing, and all of those other assets, how do those affect economic development? So the city really does, historically, has done a good job in most communities of those areas. Looking at the private, public-private economic development organization, in some cases, that's a actual private sector or nonprofit group such as ours at LAEC. that's a actual private sector or nonprofit group such as ours at LAEC, they are the interface with the business community, they are the lead marketing group, they also are the facilitator of business services and programs directly to your local businesses as well as businesses looking at coming into your community. So together, that creates the ideal environment for target industries and overall economic prosperity. They also identified several benefits that they believe will occur should we choose to move forward with a new contract with LAEC and consolidate those services. First of all, the private sector buy-in as well as the investment that the private sector can invest in a private-public partnership such as LAEC, that the program is, let's see, private sector buy-in investment for ED that public agency cannot or should not solicit, that basically they have the ability to go out and raise funds whereas the city really shouldn't do that in terms of staff members going and asking private businesses for funding for economic development services. And furthermore, that the private sector, the nonprofit, can go and do that and thereby leverage resources that can really bring greater economic development services and programs that we couldn't do alone as a public agency. Second, that there is a level of comfort that comes from prospects when they talk to a public-private partnership as opposed to talking directly to the city. As you all know from your email communications and your knowledge of the Public Information Act, the city does have limitations in terms of what we can and cannot keep private and shield from kind of the public eye with regard to economic development. And so even if some of that is perception more than reality, there is a perception within the business community, particularly site selectors, that working with a public-private partnership or a nonprofit, that they can really have the ability to keep that information that really is in many cases proprietary and should be shielded, that they have a better opportunity to keep that secret, private with a public-private partnership. Third, that you have greater access to local, state, and national company executives for advice and assistance. Something that's very common in economic development is for your economic development organization to be able to pick up the phone and call, you know, site selectors or company representatives in other states and other communities and get advice and even sometimes with regards to recruitment that can provide you with a better strategy on how to recruit a particular industry, et cetera, that those contacts are made more easily and more quickly and their access to those folks through a public-private partnership than through a strictly public partnerships. The next aspect there, that typically a private sector organization is going to be more aggressive in marketing community assets. And as we talked about even today with Wendy and I in a meeting with Tom Barth at the airport, there has been in recent history probably not as aggressive of a marketing program coming out of LAEC as there should be. And so while that isn't something that I think that LAEC acknowledges, it's something that typically they are more well-equipped for to put together and implement a marketing strategy as people primarily made up of private sector folks who understand that, who do that on a regular basis. And I think that moving forward with the new leadership at LAEC, that that is a focus that we are putting into the contract, the proposed contract in front of you, that they would be more aggressive with regard to that. And then last but not least, that generally the public-private partnership can provide faster product development and delivery, and that product can be anything from building, building information, connections to other private sector employers in your area that for instance may need to meet, they can set up meetings with your local food distributor for another food distributor that may be similar, that that, that the delivery of those services can be done more quickly through membership-driven private sector organizations. And then this slide speaks specifically to really that model or ideal economic development organization. This is something that for those of us who have had to go through international economic development council training, this is kind of a staple graphic, something that the consultant included in her materials, it's the three-legged stool of economic development programs. Now first of all, you have business attraction retention, that's something as you know that already is undertaken by LAEC. Second, business retention and expansion, again, another aspect of Longmont's overall efforts that's already being conducted by LAEC, it's in the contract, the current contract. And third, entrepreneurship and small business support. And that's the piece of the three-legged stool that is not currently with LAEC but that is being proposed to move to LAEC as part of the new contract. Again, that your successful economic development organization contains all three components of that three-legged stool of successful economic development programs. There are a number of traits for high-performing economic development organizations that they've included. This is from a document from the International Economic Development Council called High-Performing Economic Development Organizations. First of all, they're driven by the customer. Second, they operate with a strong strategy, which hopefully the Target Industry Analysis or Advanced Longmont Report will provide. They measure results and adjust. They showcase adaptability, entrepreneurialism, and risk-taking. They build strong alliances and networks. And this is the one that Avalanche pointed out is one of the more important ones that really only a public-private partnership can do, and that is receive 50% plus is the ideal of private sector investment or involvement in the economic development efforts. And then last, that those organizations have passionate or innovative leaders. So I'm not going to go into the examples that the consultant went through with you all at the last couple of council meetings ago with regard to some of the partnerships that look very similar to what's being proposed here in Longmont, but those, that's just a reminder of some of those organizations that she did highlight. So what I'd like to do now, and we can take a break for questions, or I can just, I think these last few slides are just going over the proposed contract highlights. Okay? Not seeing any questions, I'll proceed. The proposed contract highlights that we just want to call your attention to that are based, and many times, on one comment from one council member, I mean, when we had the discussion at the last meeting, and even some I suppose subsequently to that, as well as comments that have come from heads or members of LAEC that really we think if we make these changes, we'll strengthen the contract that we have now. First of all, is the first two are the ones that you all made a prerequisite of any contract negotiations, that LAEC has agreed by a vote of their board to accept responsibility for all city programs and services that we currently conduct, including the SBDC or Small Business Development Center services in which they provide classes and workshops. LAEC has agreed to be the lead marketer and facilitator for those classes, as well as the Colorado Enterprise Fund, which is what CEF stands for, that they will also take responsibility for making sure that businesses have access to that resource. And how that works is if you get turned down by a traditional lender or bank, we refer you and put you in contact with CEF, which we have been a funder of CEF for the last several years. The second one is that they have voted to provide for two unvoting city staff members on the board that would maintain one council member on the LAEC board, and the mayor is ex officio. And also, if you didn't know this, the mayor also serves on the executive committee. There are not votes taken within the executive committee, but obviously the executive committee is setting the agenda and provides a great deal of input as far as what is discussed at LAEC meetings. These additional ones, and there are a couple more pages of these, they, the new contract requires LAEC to lead a coordinated outreach plan to minority-owned and minority-serving businesses. This is something that's reflected in the targeted industry report, that we are really missing out on a huge market of our community. And while there have been individual efforts that have been made, some of, for instance, our classes at the SBDC are in English and Spanish, and the, and the city has done some of their pursuits, et cetera, in Spanish, that really we have not had a concentrated effort to have an overall outreach where the partners really come together and focus on strategies of how we are more bicultural, not just bilingual, in how we do outreach and provide relationship-building with minority-owned, minority-serving businesses. But the final one on this page is that it does require additional face-to-face meetings with all employers twice per year. This is something that came up at that original council meeting, I think there was a council member who suggested that really we needed that face-to-face, and Wendy herself actually suggested that this would be something that they would welcome, that particularly the new president, that he or she would have that requirement for face-to-face meetings with all of our major employers at least twice per year. The second page of the proposed contract highlights include creating and maintaining a rapid response team for prospects as well as expansion opportunities. This is something that has been tried but has never been particularly successful. Again, I think it goes back to the fact that there were at times both organizations were trying to maintain rapid response teams and there wasn't a kind of a consolidated effort to do that. So as part of the new contract, we're making that a requirement that for both a rapid response team for both prospects and a rapid response team for expansion opportunities locally.
Part of the rapid response team that we're talking about, and it really relates to the connection to organizations, members of the Economic Development Corporation, is really bringing in the assets that they have. So for example, it may be better as part of that that you actually have HR directors from various businesses participate in that because they can answer very specific questions about the labor force in a community, what their experience is, and you actually target the ones that are most closely related to potential prospects. So this is not a rapid response team that is focused of individuals in the organization or in LAEC. This really turns into a broader rapid, community rapid response team where you tap into all the assets that we have available.
The next item was actually suggested by a member of the Economic Development Department. If there really be a more, at least some language that addresses the website and social media presence, we had language about the website, but particularly that we would like for LAEC to take a more active role in their own existing social media presence and expand on that. We also, as a result of comments made at the last council meeting where this was discussed, we've also added means and a process for confidential prospect information sharing between LAEC and the city, including a requirement for a weekly staff communication between that city liaison that we talked about earlier, as well as the LAEC president or staff that's working with a particular prospect or small business, et cetera. And so there's now a means of doing that. First of all, maintaining the confidentiality agreement that we've recently put into place, but also making sure that that is always updated and current between the city and the LAEC. And then last on this slide...
Let me jump in. The last bit is especially important. You need different folks looking at prospects because at times what may look like a good oppo, what may not look like a good opportunity to, one person actually is a good opportunity based on other information that they may not know. And I can tell you from experience that I have seen this occur where someone was ready to say, "We shouldn't go after this," and when we found out, when I found out about it, it's like, "No, we should," and it actually worked out really well. So having that information is really important because again, different perspectives creates, you know, different opportunities and we may, or LAEC staff may see something that the others are not seeing in the discussion.
And then last, another idea that came out of a previous council discussion was more reporting, more documentation, and more interaction for you all to have with LAEC. And the way we're proposing to do that is to increase that reporting with both a written and an oral quarterly report at city council meetings. So an LAEC representative would come and present to you all the work from the last quarter, and you would have an opportunity for more interaction, as well as accountability to hold them accountable to the contract as well as the city staff as well or not. And then the last slide here is regarding the increases in funding, the increase in total funding from $200,000 to $332,500 for the remainder of 2014. I should mention that we have identified a clarification that needs to be made in your contract that you have in front of you that just states that that amount, the $332, is less whatever has been paid to LAEC already for the current year. So we need to add that provision should you move, vote to move forward, we would want that to be part of that change. But also to note, with regard to that dollar amount for 2014, we have a 50/50 cost share for the recruitment cost for the new LAEC president. And that's something that in our negotiations, there was some back and forth regarding that, but it is something that city staff has recommended to you all as part of that, as part of the contract, that we would share cost share in that search. Though the last bit there is notwithstanding implementation costs from marketing and other recommendations that are in the Advanced Longmont Plan, which calls for us to really beef up marketing efforts. Jeff serves on the Target Industry Standing Committee and heard the discussion at our last meeting about the need for really better investment from both the private sector and the public sector in marketing efforts, notwithstanding those additional costs which may come in 2015 or even later in 2014, the ongoing city investment in LAEC is anticipated at $362,500 for 2015 and moving forward. So these are the anticipated contract outcomes, this is the final slide for myself. First of all, that moving in this direction would really allow for a more unified community vision for economic development. It would eliminate staff role confusion and the competition that currently exists between the two organizations. It would continue and/or expand business services. For instance, the minority-owned business outreach strategies really could potentially expand the services that we're currently providing to small business beyond what we're doing today. Fourth, it increases, it increases LAEC recruitment retention performance measures, which was something that you all asked for. It also utilizes the existing LAEC network and the very successful events that they host to really provide services and outreach and recognition for small business as opposed to the primary employers that most of their events currently cater to. That network and those event opportunities would be expanded to provide the same services and outreach to small businesses as well. It would continue and likely expand private sector investment. As noted in the plan, the organizational assessment that was one of your background documents, the consultant is saying, "LAEC, you must go out and raise more money. Even with the city increasing funding, you really need to go out and raise more money with this new plan, with the new consolidated efforts that are being given to you. It's an opportunity to go back to the business community and say, 'We need additional investment from you as well.'" And LAEC is prepared to do that. As I have or have not mentioned, this does result in a net savings to the city, which is noted in your council communication. It also allows the city to really focus more on the business climate, the quality planning, the quality permitting process, the development review processes, as well as our CIP. And the things that cities have historically done best is focusing on the quality of life issues and the development process issues that really can make or break a city with regard to businesses' impression of your community. And last but not least, and this leads into the slides that Andy paid, the president, excuse me, the chairman of the board for LAEC asked me to include in our presentation under the next slide, it really helps diversify the LAEC board and creates a stronger connection between the city and the LAEC than what currently exists. So with that, I believe Andy has some slides that he'd like to discuss with you regarding that organizational structure.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor, city council members, good evening. I'm here to actually walk you through some of the changes that we intend to do with the board of directors to reflect the responsibilities that would come onto us for the new contract. What I'd like to direct your attention to is the first slide actually shows you a current structure of the board. It's consisting of the two unvoting city council members, the mayor, and currently Councilman Finley, which we appreciate every time. I want to note that historically, originally a couple of years ago, those were actually city voting positions, and that was not something that was ever opposed by LAEC, it was actually requested by the city when there was a conflict of interest challenge that was identified several years ago. Then you can see the rest of the board is actually composed of voting directors, some from primary industries, which you can see, they're listed, Andron, Vapor Tech, Cabal to Business Services, Frontier, Seagate Xylance, and originally Intel was a member, that seat currently vacant, we felt that vacant. Some of the other voting members are some other business opportunities or business entities in the area. We have Realtor, we have banking, we have legal, and some other things. We also try to balance even within the LAEC, the voice of just the primary employers and make sure that, and historically we've had small businesses involved there, we've had small primary employers, we've had primary employers represented down to a level of about six people. So we try to make sure that we have voice within the LAEC. So we try to make sure that we have voice within the LAEC. Going forward, what we anticipate, and this is really showing you what will happen in 2015, I'll walk you through the interim board structure, but we anticipate that if you're going to look from left to right, at the beginning of 2015, we anticipate or intend to have two voting city positions that are city-appointed staff. Our anticipation right now in talking with Harold is that we would have the city manager of Longmont be one of those positions. We are currently jointly proposing that the other one be a representative from the LPC organization, which considering the kind of work we're doing in economic development, having utilities, communication, lighting, those kind of things, we believe will be a very powerful addition to the board, in particularly in the fact that we actually have a lot of our competitive advantages in terms of low-power broadband communication, which we're investing in, that's right in that area. And so I think it would be a great place to have that represented in the board. We will continue to have approximately six primary industry directors that are voting. I took their names off simply because we don't know at this point in time who's going to want to stay on the board and who will not going into 2015. We will have what we're now referring to as non-primary directors from other businesses. And in talking with some of the staff, some of the city council, there's a desire to broaden or diversify who will be in there. That will be the opportunity that we'll have to preemptively bring in retail, bring in smaller businesses, Latino businesses, which we'll talk about in a moment. It gives us an opportunity to further diversify the board. We will continue to retain, as Sean mentioned earlier, the two non-voting positions, the mayor and one city council member. And as in addition, the mayor will continue to be a representative on the executive committee. One part that Sean did not address in the executive committee is the executive committee is the location of the body that proposes new board members. And so, in fact, the mayor had a chance to participate in this last year where we had a couple vacancies, we had a vetting process, and ultimately the executive committee chose who we believed would be the board members for the rest of the board to vote on. That can be a very influential position and help guide the board as it goes forward. One new piece that we've actually put in here, and we believe this reflects where our mission is going, is to really firmly broaden the board in terms of voice and representation into it from some of the partner economic development organizations. So you'll notice a couple of them on the far right. We've actually already talked to these organizations, and for the most part, for the ones we have talked to, they're excited by this opportunity to get a better linkage between LAEC and themselves. That would be the Longmont Downtown Development Authority, excuse me, our Boulder County Commissioners, Front Range Community College. Should note, by the way, that right now, VSD is already a voting member on the board as an investor. Donna Dadd's been a very strong member for a number of years. We will bring in a closer relationship with the Longmont Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Boulder County Latino Chamber of Commerce. And finally, sorry, it's kind of wedged in the bottom, the Boulder SBDC, that's my typo, my apologies, there will also be a representation. It's okay, we identified that ways this afternoon, and I obviously couldn't type fast enough. So this will broaden the representation of vote, the voice within the board. One of the questions that's come back is, well, these are non-voting positions. I want to let people know that. For the work and the type of activity and dialogue, if you've had a chance to be to our board meetings, there's actually not a lot of things that are driven directly by vote, it's actually driven by discussion. And so what we really are looking for is to broaden the voices that are coming into the board and make sure that we're seeing representation, particularly things that we have not done in the past. We recognize that we've never managed something like Leggitt, we've never had a SBDC direct contact, we've been primarily primary employers, and many of us bring that corporate experience into that organization. We need to balance that voice with participation from other economic development organizations. We also believe this will strongly align all these different organizations with the city and LAEC so that we not just have a greater communication and partnership between the city and LAEC, but a greater partnership between LDDA, the chambers, all the other organizations, our education organizations, which as a company, if you were to come in, that's sometimes one of the first questions, what are the schools like, what's the labor force like, what's the education like? We need to bring all these places into one place, and that's what we're designing the board to be. My final slide is really a transitional slide. If you notice, we've identified a couple individuals in red. Those are people who have been serving on the board for a very long time. In beginning in 2008, we established a term limiting process. Those individuals will term limit out after the end of this year. We do have, as I identified earlier, one currently vacant position. We've held that vacant in anticipation of this potential change, and we propose that we would actually put Harold Dominguez, city manager, immediately into this position, assuming contract approval, and he has agreed to that. The rest of the board will remain roughly the same, except we will also engage immediately on the liaison positions. And then, once the individuals are identified in red, term limit out and are no longer entitled to be able to go onto the board, then we will actually migrate, if you set back one more, to the ultimate 2015. The reason that we need to allow that to happen is that particularly the individuals that are identified here in red, they're past chairmans, they're a tremendous amount of experience and service to the board, and there's really no reason to arbitrarily kick them off before their term service is done. And quite frankly, every one of them has been past chairs, and certainly myself and Dave Huminek as the vice chair, rely a lot on the experience of these individuals. We really don't want to lose that within the board before the opportunity for them to go ends up. So with that, I think that walks us through the board structure. I think we're open, either myself or Sean or anyone else, to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mayor. Andy, when you put in Boulder County, are you looking, is it Workforce Boulder County? Is it county commissioner?
County Commissioner. County Commissioner. County Commissioner has actually started coming to our board meetings about three months ago, I think. They've been an active participant, which we've welcomed. They've been an investor in LAEC, not to the level of what you, the city, has been, but they've been an active participant, about 10% of what you are at right now. And we've really appreciated their engagement, and so they've just started doing that. We felt, given the broadening that we're trying to do, that the county commissioner was the right place to have representation.
And then, what, I'm kind of wondering why Workforce Boulder County, since they provide employers with services and training for people seeking jobs, why are they not as part of your community liaisons?
Well, as looking at all the community liaisons, one of the things we're trying to balance is participation versus size. We have to be careful that the board doesn't get too large. We have had, and we should acknowledge that, there's, just because somebody's not a board member, doesn't mean they cannot participate in board meetings. And I know Workforce Boulder County has come in and out, we've had certain members come in and out that are investors but not board members, and we welcome that. We've had the senior senator in Longmont, has been a long time participant in the board without being a member of the board. They bring that voice in, but if we try to allow everyone that was coming to the board member to be a liaison, I think we would begin to get a very uncumbered, cumbersome board structure that might become really too inefficient. And one of the things we have to do and keep in mind, the business and reacting to the businesses that are coming, we want to keep our board as nimble and reactive and diverse as we can. So it's a balance, and that, this is basically where we're at, is what we think is the appropriate level of engagement.
And I'm just wondering whether or not the work that Workforce Boulder County brings in, there, I know they have a board also, whether or not there is some overlap, because frequently there is. So just want to make sure that we've got, you know, the workforce as part of the mix there.
I'm going to turn it over to Mike to Wendy, who's far more knowledgeable.
So council members in there, this, and Wendy Navsickel with the LAEC. Workforce Boulder County is a partner of ours. Not only do we meet monthly with them in a consortium such as our business partnership group, they're also invited to all of our board meetings, and Tom Moore periodically does attend when he is available on his calendar.
Wendy, if I could ask you a question, because you're more familiar with them than I am. They are primarily in unemployment services, that is their primary focus, is that correct?
Unemployment, unemployment, but my, my, of course, they promote their programs to our employers out here so that we can help employ our services, if you will, and help fill jobs for their employees out there looking for the employees.
Catch one, Christian.
This is a question for...
Sorry. Go ahead.
Hold on.
What?
You turned yourself off.
You just did it again.
You've got to turn off.
No, don't touch anything.
I'm not. Okay. Okay, Sean, it says here that the fiscal impact will save us $100,000 to $130,000 annually, but we're going from paying LAEC $200,000 to $200,000 to $362,000. So how is that a saving? Or what am I not getting here?
Mayor, Councilmember Christensen, the savings were back in December, I guess when this was first discussed, or January. One of the things that we talked about is in the transfer of programs and services that we currently provide to LAEC, there was a potential reduction in the workforce of the city of Longmont. That results potentially in nearly $300,000 with, in addition to some funding that would go along with those programs and be, no longer be part of the city budget. So that would be a transfer. So then, the net, if you will, is what's in the council comm of $100,000 to $130,000, $50,000.
But you're really transferring those because they support, the intent is to recreate those programs within LAEC.
So some of the dollars is a direct transfer in order to fund those programs, others, other aspects of the dollars is really looking at in terms of where is there duplication and where can we generate savings in that area? And then part of it is just evaluating the overall system as a whole and what we need. So to specifically answer your question is, what we're looking at is by shaping it and reducing duplication, generating savings as a result of that. There's some other things coming out of the study that we do have to be cognizant of in terms of some of the requirements, you know, for example, they talked about the redevelopment aspect and understanding what the building structures look like and how do we assess that. So those are all pieces that come into this. So what we're saying is it has the potential to generate a net savings of $100,000 to $130,000, but as Sean indicated, there's some other components that we're getting out of the study that we need to evaluate as well.
Okay. I have another couple of comments. You were talking about part of the money that is going to be coming up is to be done for marketing and website development and all that. And yet you've been doing that all along, and doing that, it seems to be, it seems to be from the analysis, not as well as it could be. And I would suggest with somebody who's spent a lifetime in marketing that you try to hire somebody from outside to take care of that because it's like trying to do your own legal services, trying to do your own marketing services, when that isn't really what your primary job is, is probably not so wonderful.
Counselor, Mayor, Councilman Christensen, we just made a major investment this last year in our new webpage. We had made an investment about five years ago, had allowed that to ride up to last year and realized we were out, you know, out of date with that. And so before this ever was actually talked about as an increase in services, we actually, LAEC made an investment and improved our webpage, which we just recently rolled out. However, one of the lessons learned is that we probably need to do that more often, but we did use outsourced-type contractors to do that.
But you need to work on an overall marketing strategy for the whole.
Correct. And one of the things that, you know, as we've, I think most of you have seen in the news, that we just restarted our recruitment process, we had placed a pause on that while this contract and scope was being negotiated, so we understood what we were going to hire to. And one of the things that we just restarted with is that recruitment process, and one of the number-one attributes that we've recognized we need in the new president is an expertise in marketing, because that's going to be...
That would help, yeah.
Yeah, it would, we, I think it's one of the biggest lessons learned that we've had out of the TIA is, while there has been some marketing, we shouldn't say there hasn't been any, it has not been as effective as it could be.
Right.
And that is an area that we definitely need to have more focus on, and that will be a driver for recruiting going forward.
Yeah, because to tell you what, I mean, it's become a much bigger deal than, for all cities and for everybody than it used to be. And if you, if you have an integrated plan, it's much more effective that using all kinds of media and...
Go ahead.
Councilmember, Mayor Councilmember Christensen, I think that is a focus that we have to have in the sense of, we have to market as a community.
Right.
Instead of separate organizations, and I think that's one of the things that we've heard. I think we have a really good start. You know, we've had discussions about the you belong concept, and I think it's how do you take that and how do you tell people why you belong in Longmont, because it's one of the things that we've heard. But I think the coordination of the marketing also is going into, how do we, you know, market Front Range in the process? How do we market the school district? Because the school district, they're really doing some amazing things, and so I had a meeting with the site selector. And in the conversation, as we started talking about the school district, the remark was, "Those are the things that we need to see because that's really important to us." And so, you know, this is about bringing the community together in a community economic development strategy. This is not about LAEC doing it, this is not about the city doing it. It's about the community coming together.
It would be good to have a coordinated group so that the visit Longmont, which I think does a good job, and the city, and LAEC, and the school system, just if they met quarterly to coordinate efforts would be really much more effective. The other thing I, I want to add about, and I think, I'm sure you guys have talked about this extensively, but, you know, Sean has mentioned the culture change, I mean, the LAEC culture and problems historically with not sharing and having different goals and the marketing being a little bit off, and it's a, it's a kind of a cultural thing. And I know that that'll change when the new directors eliminate, uh, eliminated, appointed, but can you just give me some idea of how, what kind of discussions you've had about changing the culture so it is more, more interactive and so that it's really accountable to the city?
So Mayor, Councilman, or Christensen, I think one of the first examples I would give of how we've changed the culture since about middle of last year has been a much better partnering between key, you know, key members of LAEC and the city on how to balance the need for greater communication around what's going on with companies versus, you know, protecting the confidentiality of that. One of the things that we have to be very mindful of is ultimately, we have to work together to actually work toward the needs of our customers. And our customers are those companies that we're willing to, wishing to attract, the customers are the companies that we want to grow, and the site selectors are involved in that process. And so, you know, having been on the other side of this process within the company, confidentiality is a really big deal because a company that's thinking about moving has to understand and think about what that impact is to their own staff. And so having a company come to an organization and say, "We're thinking about coming," they place themselves at risk if they cannot trust that organization. Now, in the past, I think that we have not really done a good job of balancing both of those needs, the need of being, having confidentiality with the need of having good partnering and communication. One of the things we did late last year, probably around July, August maybe, Wendy, was create a memorandum of understanding of how we would share information. And part of that was identifying what kind of information we would share, who would get to know it, who would not get to know it. So that allowed us to balance it out, but also a lot of greater partnership. And I know key members of that have been Sean and Wendy, with Dave and Harold, and my, you know, myself and Dave on the LAEC side, Harold on the other side, to be involved in that information. And sometimes, quite frankly, we don't even share all the aspect information. In fact, sometimes it's not shared with me, it may not be shared with the LAEC board because that's what the customer wants, but it is shared between the city and the core president and the city liaison position. So I think that's one. And the fact is that we've recognized on both sides that that was needed. So there wasn't a fight there. I think that we've been able to have a much greater alignment at the leadership level and a greater partnership, recognizing some of the things that have gone well, some things that have not gone well.
So another example is, I think, just really in conversations that I've had with Dave and Andy, is actually just confronting the brutal facts where we were able to sit down with each other and just kind of lay it out and say, "Here's what, here's what I don't like." And it was back and forth, and so it was a very, I think, direct conversation, but yet it was not a combative conversation. And so I would say that when you talk about those types of culture changes, I think it's how do you have those pretty difficult conversations with each other where you recognize it, but yet you're committed to working collectively with each other.
And I would like to build on that, I guess you can see the collaboration here. There's been a number of things that we've recognized that LAEC in the past has done well, but there's also places that we recognize we can improve. Communication back to the city councils, one, that's why we built it into that contract. Performance metrics, you know, what can you do as an economic development organization? How do you measure it? How do we demonstrate, not just to the city as a major investor, but also to our private investors that they're getting a return on investment, that we're getting a benefit? We're not there yet, but that is an area that we know we need to focus on. But our first step is number one, understand the scope of LAEC. Second, get the people involved that are going to lead LAEC. Keep in mind that we have an organization that is operating at two. And, you know, quite frankly, Wendy and Donna have done a tremendous job of keeping things going while we've been able to work all the way through this process. They deserve a tremendous amount of credit because they prevented a crisis from occurring in economic development in Longmont. But myself, Dave, Harold, and as Sean have looked at strategically, where do we want to go? And there's a number of things that we want to look at, both internally within the LAEC, some things around our own governance, how we handle human resource type issues, as well as in the partnership with the city, improving the marketing, improving performance metrics, improving our collaboration with different organizations. I don't think when we vote tonight, either way, you know, and we'll support obviously whatever the city council and the mayor vote on, but this is step one of a journey that's going to take us a number of years. I've actually told my board, what we're doing today is setting economic development tone for Longmont for I think about the next five to 10 years, however we want to look at it. And we're laying a groundwork. We're not done. If we do get the honor of having the city's support and taking on these roles and responsibilities, we have to execute on it. We take that responsibility very seriously, and that's going to be a lot of work just in that. So there's a lot of room for improvement, but I, I think Harold said it well, the tone at the top at the leadership level has dramatically changed, I would say, within about the last year. I know, when did you come to the first LAEC meeting? About a year ago, maybe? Two years? Wendy made the comment, that was the first time the city manager had ever been to an LAEC board meeting. And we said, this is a good step and this is where we want to go. So I think having that alignment at the top, at the governing level of both organizations is going to be a major step forward in us getting this collaboration, which I think we all envisioned that we needed.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Andy, I wanted to thank you for your leadership on the LAEC board and all your hard work on this new agreement. I think it is a great testimony to your service to our community that we have this excellent new agreement. We paid a consultant to find out what our weaknesses are. We found out what they were, we're working to fix them, and in that vein, I would move that we approve the new agreement with LAEC.
Mayor Councilmember Finley, I appreciate the sentiment very, very much. However, I want to publicly acknowledge that I am only the, I think Dave calls me the public face. I'm not used to that. But there's a tremendous amount of work that the board has done. In fact, I think the board, I mentioned in the last board meeting, has worked harder in the last year than they've probably worked in the last five because of the amount of effort that we've had. So it's been a very strong team effort and a team effort on part of city staff as well.
Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The, I guess I've got a couple of questions and then also, I'm going to vote for this, but I do have some questions and some, not concerns, more along the lines of why aren't we doing it this way? And first of all, I didn't see anything in the agreement, what if the benchmarks aren't met?
So once the performance measures are set up, this, you know, keep in mind that the contract is renegotiated on an annual basis. And so that also provides annually certainly a strong incentive for LAEC to get performance where it needs to be if we find ourselves in a situation where city council is not pleased with performance, which I think is what you're talking about.
Right.
Because I'm assuming that we're not meeting meaning not up, not meeting as in not exceeding, because that's what we're going to say.
Right, yeah, just meeting your benchmarks.
Correct.
So my perspective on this, that was why the quarterly reporting was so important for me and the presentations to the council on the quarterly report, because A, we need to identify if they're not being met, we needed to identify those areas early, corrective action needs to be taken. And if we continue having, having issues, as Andy and I discussed, obviously there's a different conversation that starts occurring. But that, that is the reason for the quarterly reporting and the face-to-face conversation with the council.
Mayor, Councilmember Bagley, I do also want to just point out the provision in the contract, which is on page six of 12, item number six, that does say that if there is a breach, any part of this agreement in whole or part due to LAEC's breach of any provision in this agreement, that they will be liable for damages and that the contract can be terminated, so.
Okay, all right. And number, next question, eight point five, talks about how the city employee will be designated by the city. Will the second one be the same way?
The second voting position?
That the city, the city says that we want it to be LPC, so therefore it'll be LPC and then you agree to it, or?
I think, you know, what we would do is we actually came to the LPC as an agreement jointly between the two. If that was to change long-term, we believe that will be part of the contract negotiation that will determine who that position is.
And again, we can deal with that next year if.
Yeah, we are going to be in a situation where we're renegotiating this contract in about eight, nine months in the 2015. And we actually felt, both Dave and I did from a corporate governance, well, board governance point of view, sorry, that the fact that we have to renegotiate this contract yearly allows the opportunity to continue to make sure we're aligned. Because we have to recognize we both have voices in this process.
So again, from my perspective, there's, there's really two departments that we're finding that really have a tangible impact on economic development. It's Longmont Power and Communications and Public Works and Natural Resources. And so as we're moving through this, based on what we're seeing, right now broadband's at the front of the line in terms of what it really means to our community, and so that's really the natural fit. But based on how we're moving and the types of businesses that we're seeing come into our community, it's reasonable to think that it may be important to bring Public Works and Natural Resources into the mix down the road because of a different perspective. But those are the two that, that really, when you have these conversations, that folks focus on.
Okay. And one other, forgive me, one other consideration to think about is, as I said before, LAEC operates under term limited board of directors positions. Our anticipation is that would apply to all the positions that are voting, not just the non-city ones. And so, you know, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, would be three, two-year terms is the current term limit? So then maybe a time in the future, we find that somebody's been on the board for a long time, we may see a term limited situation, which are then, you know, require addressing at that point.
And I guess the, but what the, I guess this is the bigger, the bigger concern slash question I have, and that goes back to, if you put up, could you please put up the slide for the proposed 2015 LAEC board structure?
Got it.
I guess, I guess my question, I guess my question is, why this structure? And what I mean specifically is votes. I think, I understand certainly why the primary employers hold such a prominent position, meaning that, you know, was it 1.5 to 2.5? There's a leverage effect. Every, every primary job that we create brings, you know, one plus, 1.5, 2.5 times or X factor to our economy. But that doesn't necessarily mean that those primary employers should be the people voting. And I guess the other thing is, I also, I'd feel more comfortable if the mayor and Councilmember Finley had votes. And the, and the reason is because, you know, at the city on boards, there's a difference between being a liaison, you know, what's up guys, you know, versus an actual board member. You know, I mean, the difference between me voting as a council member and sitting in the audience and being able to stand up to public invited to be heard, there's a difference. And I know that yes, council ultimately has the purse strings, but that's just a sledgehammer. It's not a scalpel. I'd like to see Councilmember Finley and the mayor have voting power.
So let me, Mayor and Councilmember Bagley, let me address these a little bit differently. We have to remember that, I want to address the primary employer first, you guys are a major investor. In fact, you currently are around around the 45% of budget investment level. One of the weaknesses that we will have going forward, you know, quite frankly, is that when this contract, or if this contract is approved, you actually get up into the 65% range, which is a, you know, an issue from my point of view that we need to balance that out in terms of getting increased private investment on this. One of the things that we want to make sure everyone understands is any primary company representative up there is actually an investor. And we did an analysis of our investors and we found that about, it's in the ballpark of 50 to 60% of our investment comes from about 14 primary employers. So they have an interest in the Longmont Area Economic Council, most of them do it, you know, speaking momentarily for Amgen, we did it because an interest in the community, that's why we invested. And that's what, the people that are engaged and want to be a part of our voice. Keep in mind that the primary employers, even in the terms of what this structure would be, would not be able to basically quote hijack the board, even if they all moved in the same direction, and I will tell you, they all don't. You know, we're not always aligned. So the preponderance of the primary company representatives really shows really that representation from the external investors that are coming into it. So that's one of the reasons why the structure is there. To the idea of having the mayor and city council position having a vote, quite frankly, that's in my mind, your call. Because our understanding, if you go back in history, Councilmember Santos observed this back in January 28th, because the city council votes on the contract, it was deemed at the time that this was done, I think it was in the 2007, 2008, '09 range, it was deemed that it was a conflict of interest, but within the council, not within the board of LAEC, but within the council. And because of that, it actually led to times when the mayor and the representation, you know, the representative had to recuse themselves from the voting on the contract, which was ironic, because they were the most knowledgeable about what was going on in LAEC. To resolve that, we determined and created the non-voting liaison positions within the city council, that was at the request of the city. So I think if they want to have the votes, I don't believe we would have any problem with that. We, even though the positions are quote non-voting, the city council has tremendous influence even in the current people that are there, because we know you hold the purse strings, number one. But number two, you're actually our biggest customer. We're businessmen, if we're not listening to the customer, we're not doing our job. So I think the idea of the second part really is if that's where the council wants to go, I think we ultimately have to figure out how to resolve that conflict of interest issue to allow that to happen. I don't think the LAEC per se is opposed to that. As I said before, that used to be the way it was set up. In terms of the comment you made about the non-voting liaisons, many of these organizations right now are coming into the LAEC for the first time. And so it's a matter of really factoring that up, engagement and helping to influence our strategy, and also realizing that these people represent customers as well. We anticipate, you know, one of the things that really has come out of the target industry analysis is that I would admit that the LAEC probably is out of not a good engagement with the Latino community. That was a big finding that came out of it. That's one of the reasons we want the Boulder-Latino Chamber there, to help guide what the board is doing in terms of making sure that we're taking that voice in. But ultimately, it's the, LAEC's responsibility to engage that. And so that we felt that the right thing to do to balance the governance and the accountability with the LAEC board directors with the voice of the other development organizations was to formally recognize these positions as liaisons, to get their vote in, formally require us to have them in the board, but the responsibility of the LAEC rests with the voting directors that's there currently in existence, which you will have a presence on.
Couple of comments. First of all, I'm not in agreement, I don't think it was, I mean, I know this, this isn't you, this is more like the, the legal staff. I don't think it was a conflict. My understanding of what happened before was you had some polarized political ideologies on council that were worrying over whether or not we back LAEC. And somebody was calling, oh, conflict, conflict. And the response was, well, fine, we'll just do this. Companies all the time have people who represent their interests. I view Councilmember Finley and Mayor Coombs as basically representing the city's interests as the biggest 65% investor. Their job, as you pointed out, is to make sure that the money's being well spent and I'd like to see them have a vote. I don't think it's a conflict. Now, Mr. May might disagree, but I don't think it is. And the other thing is, I guess the other thing, I, this doesn't apply to people like you, Mr. Bayde. You've done a phenomenal job. I saw it firsthand as I was sitting on the board, but the digital globe thing, you know, that was kind of a disaster. And so I guess the, the, I guess I just, I don't necessarily think that somebody who puts up money should get the vote. And I also don't think that just because you're a primary, primary employer, you should necessarily steal everything for a lot of reasons. You know, the executives that sit on that board tend to be bigger thinkers and not doers, whereas I think of somebody like, you know, Kathy Webber Harding, you know, she, she represents thousands of local businesses and would be in a very healthy situation to be able to not just contribute, but to vote. And so I guess that, like I said, I'm going to vote for this, but I'd like to have further discussion as to who gets votes, because voting is power and voting translates into direction, energy, et cetera. And the year I was there, or two years, I guess I was there, sometimes we lacked energy. And I think that that had a result, a lot to do with, with just the way the, the board is made up and who has votes and, and the executive director, and we're making a lot of moves in the right direction. I just would like to see everybody in the room that's on that list actually have a real voice in things.
Mayor Councilmember Bagley, just one comment back, I think. I understand the perspective that votes mean power. I've been on the board now for about 2006 up to now, and in fact, I'm getting close to being term loaded out myself. I will say that the vast majority of the voting over LAEC has been nearly unanimous. And I would say from a business point of view, you know, votes have power, money has more power. And so customers have more power. And I've not really seen too many issues in all the time I've been on LAEC that are decided by a four, three, or an eight, nine, you know, seven vote. It's the discussion, it's the getting the voice in. We've had a lot of times where we've had an idea, usually in a motion, and the idea's been shot down and it's been improved, to where we ultimately actually find ourselves in agreement as to what we're doing. To us, that process is actually where the power is. And we feel, quite frankly, that the voice of like a Kathy Webber Harding or Kimberly McKee or a representative from the Latino chamber is going to influence that process more, quite frankly, than the vote. In fact, I can only think of maybe one or two motions that I voted against in the whole time I've been in LAEC. The power, the way the board works, quite frankly, is much more along the process of how the ideas are generated and how the perspective is there. With that said, I think we have a lot of opportunity going forward. We will have a stronger partnership going forward than we've had in the past. And I don't think anything in this is a done deal in the sense of we're going to put it in concrete and leave it that way. But I think it will be a conversation, it will be two-way to make sure we reflect all the stakeholders in place.
Well, I'm not going to ask for an amendment, I'd rather hear discussion at this point, but those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. First of all, I just want to comment, the competitive nature of today's marketplace to our primary employers is very intense. And if we're not making changes to a way we do business, we kind of are defining ourselves as a definition of insanity, doing the same things over and over again, expecting a different result. And I think that we have had, we haven't really taken the best advantage of the opportunities we've had in the past. And so I, I definitely like just the fact that when you make organizational change, it's painful, we have to get through that. And also understand that it's, it's going to be something new and we need, we need to, we need to give it every chance to work. So I guess the only question I have, it's kind of the elephant room, what happens if this doesn't work and we can't put it together and we can't get more primary employment here?
You know, that's probably, there's things that keep you up at night. As I said before, forgive me, Mayor, Councilmember. We have to execute on this. The board has talked about that. And, you know, once we vote either way, we'll understand the future of what this is going to be, we have a responsibility to execute to you. My perspective on this is that we shouldn't have a, I'll use your language, but Councilmember Bagley, a digital globe surprise that this isn't working. And the way to prevent something from bringing out a disaster is to catch it early, correct it. And I think you're going to do that by having visible metrics, which, which we need to do a better job of developing. That we will also do it by having a much more constant, frequent communication. I think quarterly will feel about right. I think anything more frequent will probably become burdensome to both organizations. And then I think really fundamentally, what we have to have is frank conversation between the two of us. We have to have a recognition of what economic development means and what it doesn't mean. And I'm going to give a quick example of that. I think everyone is aware of what's happening at Amgen. I am the chair of the board of the Longmont Area Economic Council. And yet, the board did not know anything that was happening at Amgen because I have a fiduciary responsibility in my company to protect its interests. So we have to recognize that when a company makes a decision to go downsize, either to leave or to go, a lot of times they're not going to talk to anybody because they have stakeholders within the company in that. And so sometimes I think from an economic development, once a company's made that decision, we may not know about it. On the other hand, we have tremendous ability to influence and make ourselves attractive to new companies. And more importantly, we have a tremendous ability to actually grow the companies that are here, which is certainly an area that LAEC's responsibility would expand if this was improved. But I think we have to be realistic as to what good performance is and what it isn't going forward. In a declining economy, a lot of companies will hunker down and make decisions that they won't talk about. And that's just the reality of what they're doing to protect their business. On the other hand, I think as we work this jointly, and this certainly would be my intent, I don't I don't wanna find ourselves talking a year from now going, "Wow, you know, six months ago, this was going off the rails, and we didn't do anything." To me, that's how we prevent this from becoming a disaster.
Yeah, I just can follow that up, is that, I don't think we wanna put it on a one-year timeframe, is to make, you know, basically, we're halfway through this year by the time things get rolling again, too, so.
Correct. And this will be the reason I will have the quarterly, but we also have to recognize, too, you'll have active participation from mayor, city council member in two, one this year, two next year, staff members on a monthly basis, so we'll be able to actually monitor this very closely.
So, to provide some more information, I think, you know, this is not how we work it one year, and we evaluate it, and we say, "Well, this is a structure that works." Because the reality is, is we have to be in a constant state of evaluation, because everything is moving around us, and it's moving very fast. And so what the world looks like today, in terms of the market and what that really means to us, it may look completely different in three years. And so part of this is exactly tapping into what Andy said, is that we have to be in a constant state of evaluation, and we have to adjust. The reality is, is even when the market had its downturn, there were communities that did really well in economic development. And those communities were adapting to the market and making the adjustments they needed to make. And so this is A, constant state of evaluation, B, constant correction as we're moving through this. Those are the two big pieces in this, and I think if we embrace those two things, you may have a slowdown, but you're not gonna have a failure. And it's really staying on top of it to prevent that failure as you're moving forward.
And if I could make one addition to that, Mayor and Councilmember Moore, there is a positive to this. Okay? As I said, having worked on the other side of this, one of the biggest turnoffs of a community, when you go in and think about locating a business there, was any hint that either the organization, the city, or the economic development wasn't that business-friendly. You know, we've had a history of that in some of the local towns, even in this area, not Longmont. Second, the more cohesive a message and more cohesive a response we have to our customers, whether they be companies that are trying to grow within Longmont, companies that are thinking about coming here, somebody wants to start a business, is just gonna benefit all parties involved, and quite frankly, increase our attractiveness to a lot of the people that make some of the big decisions, site selectors and external companies. So there's a benefit both ways. We'll monitor performance, we'll make sure we don't go off track, and I think ultimately we're gonna find that we, you know, if we don't come out with a higher performing economic development engine over where we're at now, that we have not done what we need to do with our mission.
I guess I'd like to make some comments, you know, sort of now, I'm a third year on the board, and I have to kind of agree that, in all the boards that I've been there, I can't remember one of them that wasn't a super majority or a complete majority. I think the board has a pretty good job of listening to everybody's points of view and evaluating that, and so it's a very consensus-type board, so I don't think whether or not I had a voting position or didn't, wouldn't have influenced, you know, at least looking in the past, any of the votes, their, or my engagement on the board. I do agree with Councilmember Bagley that I don't think inherently it would be a conflict of interest for the mayor or the city council person in the future to have a position on the board, even though we are part of the improvement process, I think that there's, I kind of agree with them. But, you know, I'm fine right now for going forward of 2015 with this structure, if we need to tweak it and change it in future years, if we find something in this board structure that's not quite perfect, and we wanna add more voting members or change the voting around, we can do that in future contracts. But I think this is a good starting position, and I really appreciate all the hard work and thought that went in this, and I understand, you know, why we ended up in a situation where we don't have, we're not voting members on the board. So anyway, that's my two cents of good work. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. With the motion that was made, Councilmember Finley, was that in consideration of the language tweak regarding funding that Sean May mentioned of earlier? You wanna address that?
Just to reiterate, Mayor, Councilmember Santos, we did, went to clarify in the language of the proposed contract that the 332,500 would be the dollar amount for the rest of, for 2014, minus what we've already paid, which is approximately 66,000 on the existing contract.
Is that correct? So, and that was the second, so I would agree with that. With regard to voting membership, 'cause I was there, yes, there was, there was brought up a conflict regarding, conflict of interest regarding the mayor at the time and the voting member of city council. Some of it was whether that mayor and that member of council, whether there was a voting conflict, some people can argue that there was the voting conflict, some people can argue that it was political, some people can argue it was some vendetta against the LAEC. I would, you know, you can, some people can laugh, some people can, some people can say, "No, that wasn't the case," but what ended up occurring was, I believe, $60,000 was cut from the LAEC funding that year. Because what happened was, those two members of council had to recuse themselves, or as a member of council used to say, "recluse," which is not correct, it's "recuse themselves" from that vote, and funding was cut. It was very political. I would really, and then, a change of council came, and we changed the voting structure. I would really hate to see that happen again, a contentious council comes, and we have that occurrence happen again, whether you like the LAEC or not. So that's why we have council that is a non-voting member. I have no problem with the proposed 2015 voting struct, board structure. I think the rest of it, it was mentioned. Change is difficult. Change is hard. Change is not gonna be pleasant. Non-voting liaisons, community liaisons, Fay is the senior liaison, and she goes, when I was there, she went to every meeting, when I was on council, when I was, as the non-voting member. Her input was taken just like any other voting member of the LAEC. I don't see how that is, I don't believe that's changed. I run into Fay quite a bit, and she hasn't said that she's not listened to. I know former councilmembers from Moore attends, probably to have lunch. But, you know, whoever showed up, I know County Commissioner Deb Burner showed up, you know, would show up. Other members of the public would show up, they, you know, you would get their, you know, members of the public would get their attention, get the chair's attention, and everyone had an opportunity to speak, everyone was listened to. People made points. I think one of the things people voted on most was the acceptance of the financials. That was more or less, people voted on. I can't, I can't think of a vote that was taken, besides the one vote that says, "Yeah, basically, council, you don't, you're not gonna, we'll accept that you won't have a vote anymore." So, you know, if later on we just, you know, if it's recommended by the attorneys that there's no conflict, then okay, we'll change the board structure for crying out loud. But I would really hate to go back to the way it was. It was very political. This does not need to be a political board, to go back to the way it was, and I would really hate to see that. I think the LPC director to be a member of staff as a part of the board would be good. I'm glad that Harold, the city manager, is gonna be a voting member, I think that is vital. And it's always good to have education, whether it's Don, who's been, is fantastic superintendent, and hopefully Linda Kern, who's always been at those meetings, is a great representative of front range. And having the chamber, Latino chamber, and the DVA there, as well as the SPD, DC, so I like the board structure. And to those other board members who are gonna be rolling off, thank you for your service.
I do wanna, Mayor, Councilman Santos, only one comment to just clarify that Fay did finally retire.
Oh, did she?
And so we recognize her years, many years of service, she'd been there even before I came in '06, and I think we did treat her as just like any other board member, because her input was important.
Well, she always introduced, you know, I'm a representative of the senior, you know, senior center, so.
Councilmember Wilson. I have a couple of legal questions to ask Mr. May. So if we've got a city staff member, of the two city staff members that are voting members, is there a divided fiduciary responsibility between them being a voting member of a board and them representing their first obligation, my assumption would be, is to the fiduciary responsibility of protecting the city? And, yeah, they're also the ones who, under Harold's direction, Sean's working to draft contracts, so, you know, where do we head in that legal minefield?
Mayor, Council, you're the mayor, city attorney. So we have looked at this issue, and my understanding of conflict of interest law, there's not much in Colorado, there is some across the country, is whether or not the potential for a conflict exists. And a conflict exists when you have a duty of loyalty, fiduciary duty, a duty to the public, however you wanna couch it, the two different masters. So when you are on the board or directors of an entity, you have a duty of loyalty to that entity. If you're an employee for another entity, you also have a duty of loyalty to that entity. And so when those two separate entities could have divergent views, doesn't have to be an actual conflict, it could be a potential of a conflict. When that could occur, that is a conflict of interest.
And so do we have a conflict of interest, potential? I mean, say for example, what Councilmember Moore said is, you know, if we have a catastrophic failure, and, you know, we've got two people sitting on, two staff members sitting on a board, and, you know, we've got a contract renewal where the council's gotta make a decision, and, you know, Harold serves at our pleasure, and, you know, what do we, what do we do? I mean...
Lawyers have very active imaginations.
I think I have one, too, but...
I can think of a situation where I think the conflict would be pretty apparent. So there's a downturn in the economy, the city is looking for savings. I think as a city manager, you'd be looking for savings across the city. This contract could be one of the items up for cuts. But if the city manager was serving on the board directors for LAEC, I think it's in LAEC's interest to preserve their contract amount. So the city manager in his city manager hat would say, "Ooh, cut that contract." The city manager in his board director's hat would say, "Ooh, preserve that contract, conflict."
I mean, and I'm just, you know, the other thing that, you know, we, I almost started a score sheet, how many times we talked about primary employers, and we're turning over the full responsibility for all the small business and retail. I have not heard a lot of talk about retail. I've heard that we're gonna continue the retail programs, but, you know, what I've heard primarily tonight is, primary employers, small business, but, you know, this focus on retail that the city has, I'm very nervous about having a new, you don't currently do this work at all, the city has done it, and frankly, the city has done a really good job with the retail stuff. I mean, after all, you know, nationally, the city's asked us to come and present to the national conference in Boston in 2012 as a best practices on how to implement the small business and retail, primarily retail, and economic gardening. And so that part of our system wasn't broke, and in my opinion, didn't really need a lot of fixing when it wasn't broke. But, you know, I haven't, and my lack of confidence really is that we're making this wholehearted transition, we have a potential conflict of interest still, and I haven't, you know, heard enough competency around the retail part of it. And so I'm not gonna be voting for this, because I would like to see it phased in. First of all, I'd like to see you guys get a new director, let them get their feet wet, see where it's going, and then talk about phasing things in, looking at a marketing plan that's strategic, not just for primary employers, but how is that gonna market the retail environment? And frankly, the risk for the city is, if this goes south, we have no backup plan. You're our backup plan. And so, again, I think there's an inherent conflict of interest that we've already set up for ourselves, it's gonna make it really, really hard. And I probably won't be on city council, you know, this is probably gonna happen more than two years from now, because, you know, the first year's gonna be a time of adjustment, and so we might not do as good a job, and that might be to be expected, but the expectation is we'd be doing a better job from day one. So I really, I'm very nervous about putting every, all the eggs in one basket. I'd like to see the director hired, I'd like to see what the expertise is, I'd like to see the way you've had additional people coming in as liaison, different stakeholders is great, but I don't know how, I'd like to see some of that interaction, that vibrancy, and the give and take on the board before we turn over all the retail part of it. Because we don't have a backup plan, and flying without a net, you know, doing those acrobatics without a net, when you guys don't have a director yet, and you're actually asking us to kick in more money for marketing, more money for everything, plus half the money to go find a new director, is, you know, it's quite, it's quite a big leap for me. And, you know, I just would like to see this worked out a little bit more in the retail area before I feel comfortable voting on the whole package. So I'm not gonna vote, I'm gonna vote no right now.
And Councilmember Robinson, before we leave the conflict issue, we're also having discussion with my office whether the LAEC could provide a waiver of the duty of loyalty of those city representatives on their board. I mean, I think it's pretty clear to all that those voting members are there to represent the interests of the city, and an explicit acknowledgement and waiver of that duty of loyalty to the organization could work.
If I can tap into this, and so the guiding organization that looks at our profession is very clear. Our loyalty is and always will be to the city's structure. And so if that situation were to present itself, actually, they have a process for dealing with city managers who go through that. And so that's another component associated with our professional organization.
Councilmember Hallen. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I can actually address two birds with one stone, and that's, and that is, the example is, let's suppose we're Warren Buffett, and we own Berkshire Hathaway, and we get a controlling interest in Gillette, and we have 10% interest in Gillette, and we buy it, what are we gonna do? If we have the votes, we're gonna appoint a board member to Gillette to protect our interests. And if that board member ever comes back and goes, "Oh, sorry, Warren, you know, there was a conflict, and I didn't know, was it you or Gillette? So I went with Gillette, and sorry, screwed you, Warren," you know, it doesn't work that way. This is a board. You know, it's not like a council where we are elected by the constituents to serve them. Boards are made up of ownership interests, and then people appoint people to represent their interests, whether it's the mayor, whether it's the city manager, the assistant city manager, Bonnie Finley. I mean, the whole point is that, that's what I mean by there's no conflict. This isn't where we have two different equal jobs. This is a situation where the city is appointing people to represent city interests. And so that's why I think that the previous conversation about whether or not there was conflict was somewhat ludicrous and silly, because there wasn't one. And I don't think that if Harold, or Sean, or Tom Naniota served, there's not going to be one there either. to be one there either because they are representing the city. And I don't look at the Longmont Economic Council, I mean, and even, I mean, let's just go through the list. You've got a conflict. You can't tell us, we want you as the city to serve there and protect, we want Angie to stay. And you can't tell us because you worship at the feet of Angie. Part of my, as I was getting clarity, part of the problem with LAEC that it's been, has been that our board members represent their own interests. And so part of my concern is that when you have large voting blocks of primary employers, you know, they're representing their own interest. And I want that spread out a little bit more because I don't think that's a conflict. Andy Bay serves at Angie's request and was asked to serve by the LAEC, not the city, therefore there's no conflict. And so that would, so I think all these go together. Now, I think we should also vote for it. I'd ask you to reconsider because I think that a seven hour vote showing that Longmont is behind the new, the new, you know, structure shows that we're going to give it a shot, you know? So having momentum and support and, you know, I think would lend itself to being more successful. And we can always in a year say, you know what, let's kill it, or I'm going to kill it unless I get a ballot, or whatever. But I just don't, I think that if we start worrying about the conflict issue, I mean, it sounds like you lose enough sleep over it. And I think we should just, we should just vote for it and then reassess in a year. And if it doesn't work, we change it. We bring you, Andy, we bring you.
I just, we, and going through all the meetings, I have a lot of confidence that they can handle taking over, you know, programs like WAGI and doing retail. It's a very competent board with a lot of intelligent people. So I have total confidence that, you know, even though that hasn't been in their bucket, that I feel confident they're going to do a really good job. So I feel comfortable. Councilmember Christensen.
Am I on now? Yeah. All right. Okay. Mayor, I share the same concerns with Councilmember Bagley about the non-voting people who, because it really, it still is power. I realize that people have a voice, just as people have here, but I do agree with, with Councilmember Bagley that if there's a big difference between people who have a voice and the audience, and we do listen to them, and that's what we're elected to do, is to serve their interests, not our own. But there's a difference between being in the audience and being here and having a vote. And it does concern me that we're eliminating the people with the expertise in economic gardening and in redevelopment and putting our eggs in one basket. And I know that concerns you too, but we, on the other hand, have these non-voting people who have, who do represent small businesses and I would, I would also like to see them have a vote, just as Councilmember Bagley asked.
Mayor Kimes, can I add one clarification? Mayor Kimes, Councilmember Christensen, we are actually retaining all redevelopment services within the city of Longmont. So no redevelopment services would be transferred. So I do want to make that clarification. In addition, neither the city nor LAEC has ever done concerted retail recruitment. So the only thing that we have done is simply provided small business services to all businesses of all types, of which retail is one. And so I just, I just want to clarify that in no time has there been a real concerted effort or a lot of financial resources spent on retail recruitment by either organization. And in this case, the only retail recruitment that you could say we have been done has been at redevelopment levels. So Twin Peaks Mall, some of the other redevelopment sites that you're aware of, there could be some retail recruitment there, but that would be done by the city as part of the redevelopment strategies as opposed to something that LAEC would do.
We've done some analysis on leakage and things like that.
Okay, I guess we've got an option that's on second, if I, it's time to vote. Okay, class is six to nine, with Councilmember Robinson descending. Let's take a five minute break for a last one.
At the podium.
Mayor, member of the council, Jeff Friesner, recreation and golf manager. So for the next two hours, I will tell you about, oh, okay, sorry. So just a quick summary about the master plan. The Park Rec and Trail master plan work was started in 2012. And it was reported back to you last year with the original draft of the master plan, the Park Rec and Trail master plan, that our community was voicing very strongly that we needed to look at the opportunity to do a competitive swimming pool. The community felt that the rec center was really meeting the needs of the recreational swimmer, but not as much about the competitive swimmer or Centennial Pool with its age and the lack of ability to host large events because of the lack of spectator space. It no longer really met the needs of our community. In addition, over the years, and not mentioned as much during the Park Rec and Trail master plan process, but there has been a large contingent over the years of people voicing their interest in not having just a seasonal ice operation, but being able to offer one or two sheets of ice year around. That was included in the Quail master plan several years ago. And council agreed to that master plan to commit that site to that future opportunity. So at that time last year, you directed staff to develop a draft scope of services for a feasibility study that is presented to you this evening. The other thing that I'll mention is during, after the time where you asked staff to do that, there was conversations with the city manager and people with the school district that they were interested in possibly participating in a feasibility study with the city. And when the city council and the school board had their joint meeting, they indicated that they were interested in talking about the feasibility study also. I will say that the school district has not taken any formal action. I'm approaching you first, and then based on whatever direction you give staff tonight, we will approach them if that's your wish. And the scope of service really is not about designing the facilities, but it's really more about doing a financial study that will talk about how much it will cost to build the facilities, how much it will cost to operate, continue on with capital over the years, and then also talk about the revenue that we could expect to bring in during that, with that operation. We do a market analysis. We would again further investigate the opportunity for a partnership with the school district. We would like to have them give us feedback on some conceptual elements of the facilities. Does it make sense to build two separate facilities? Does it make sense to build one large facility? One of the questions that always comes up with competitive swimming, does it make sense to build a 50-meter pool or a 25-yard pool? 25 yards is the requirement that the school district follows with their high school swim program. The other question, does it make sense to build one sheet of ice or two sheets of ice? Again, it would do the cost and revenue analysis. And then the third thing that we feel is important to add to the study is to look at the impact that building a new pool and a new ice rink, what that would have on existing facilities. The Park Rec and Trail master plan talks about Centennial Pool is 40 years old this year, and the recommendation in that plan is that the city no longer invest in the pool and that we look at other ways to serve our community. That is, I think, without a lot of study, and I think this work would help us be able to identify whether it does make sense to continue in that investment in Centennial Pool. So staff is estimating that the study would cost approximately $150,000. We are proposing that the city pay for half of that and that we approach the school district to pay for the other half. So with that said, the options that were laid out is being able to ask your permission to move forward with the feasibility study, funding half of it, and then directing staff to approach the school district to see what their interest is, to give other direction to staff, or to just tell us that now is not right the time, not the right time, and that we come back and visit this at a later date. I would also just like to reemphasize what Park and Rec Advisory Board Member Sharon O'Leary had mentioned earlier, that the Park and Rec Board did address this at their meeting last week, and were supportive of moving forward and really recommended working with the district, that it really makes sense, made sense to them that this be a real collaboration between the two entities. With that, I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Robinson.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. How does this fit in with the master plan for the large community park on the west side of town where there was a recommendation for an outdoor swimming pool and then recommendation even further in the future for a second rec center with another pool?
So this plan would not talk about location. We have a dedicated space at the Dry Creek Park, right on the corner of Clover Basin and Grand Meadows. But that would not, this study would not specifically define that that would happen there, or even at the Quail site for the ice rink. This study is really about the financial feasibility and whether we as a community can afford to not only build it, but fund it for years to come.
So when we did the planning for Dry Creek Park, did we not do any feasibility of actually building the facility? Because I know we got a lot of numbers on council about when that plan was, you know, worked through, and then we were given the final numbers and the phasing and all that.
There was some cost assessments that were done, I believe by Barker Rinker, CCAT, the firm that actually designed Longmont Rec Center. But there was really no program development that really said what would go into that facility. I think it was just designated as a space that would have approximately 80,000 square feet and an estimate of what it would cost to build that. In the Park Rec and Trail master plan, the consultants estimated that they believed it would cost about $28 million to build a competitive pool. Again, that's their number. We want to make sure that if this is funded, that we verify that that's really the case.
This is a...
Yeah, go ahead.
This is a more specific focus to really get the detail in terms of the cost, not only for the pool, but also for the sheets of ice. But more importantly, it's also to do a market analysis in terms of what that really looks like in terms of the revenue that will be generated and what the operating costs will be. Because as we've said before, in a lot of cases, the easy part of the conversation is building it. What you really need to look at is how do you fund the O and M expenses associated with this over time? And this is a major component of this look.
This seems like a really high price, because we, I remember the council a couple weeks ago was looking at, you know, hiring an outside consultant to do some, you know, planning work with planning codes, and we were blocking at $80,000. And this is even more expensive than the parts and rec master plan.
Councilmember Robinson.
I think those are both the, I think they're really important to the future for amenities at large and also the school system. Can you tell me what the, I know Sinead has an ice rink in the rec center, but that's not very easily available for people. It costs a lot of money and it's a 12-mile drive. Can I tell you the next closest ice rink?
There are ice rinks in Windsor, there are ice rinks in Fort Collins, there's an ice rink that the Y has in Lafayette, and then Superior is also redoing their ice facility. And really, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So I'm having a hard time with it. It just seems like it's a nice to have, especially at this point in time. How are we going to pay for it seems to be a big problem for me. Since we're doing a good job right now of paying for our rec center, we're funding that, self-funding that at, what, 80 or 90% probably? So, I mean, in any case, this would have to come out. Construction, payoff of the bonds, O and M, it would have to be, it would have to be a self-supporting facility. And I, I'm just having a hard time with it. It seems like a nice to have, not a have to have. And I think at this point in time, we, as a city, need to be going through a budget reset process, figuring out where we stand, what we could potentially anticipate in revenues in the future. And to spend $75,000 or $150,000 right now just really rugs me their own way. Now, I know there are groups within the city that think this is important, and as a recreation-minded city, this would be a great amenity. And I, I just really am not willing to support spending $75,000 for a study right now, especially with everything else we need to go through for the next five years.
The one thing I would just mention is the debt service is not included in that cost recovery for the rec center. That's just the operational costs of it.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Centennial Pool is past its use of life, correct? It's four years old.
Yeah, without a major renovation, I would say yes.
So my daughters take swim lessons there, swim there every Saturday. And I know Councilmember Bagley goes swimming there.
Not to mention Mayor Coombs.
And Mayor Coombs. Sorry, Mayor. How close are we to having to replace it? I know it's at the end of life. It could go at any time with that look.
Well, no, no, it's not as bad as all that. I think we still have some good years there.
Great, I mean, but it's, it's constantly used. I mean, when I'm there, it's used swim lessons, there are people in there swimming laps, scuba diving going on, you name it. Various, you know, various swim teams use it. I know they use the YMCA because my daughters should take swim lessons there. But if we have a major issue, pump goes down, filter goes down, how much are we talking and how long will it be out of service?
Well, right now, we as staff have a CIP that's called PR 102 that handles the maintenance of all the pools within the city. So to do some type of pump, motor, filter, that sort of thing, we are prepared to handle that. It's that bigger thing where you have to start replacing HVAC, you have to start replacing the stainless steel gutter that goes around the pool, any type of work to, to the tank itself, that's where...
And the concrete flooring.
Yes, there's some pretty serious ADA requirements that we're going to have to address over the next few years. So it all becomes, I think, information that would come from this feasibility study that would be able to answer, just like we all have the concern with our cars, how far do you keep putting that next and, you know, repair into it before it's time to say, you know, we've done enough and it's time to get a new one?
How much is in the undesignated reserve for this fund?
So before it came up, Jim talked to me in that there are dollars in the Public Improvement Fund that would not need to be, so we wouldn't have to take from the undesignated resource that we talked about in the, in the plan, and that he indicated that we could fund that out of the...
Public Improvement Fund?
Yes.
Jim, how much are we talking? Isn't that fun? Plenty? Enough to cover... Enough to cover 150? Enough to cover half, as long as disclosure goes along.
So if I can jump in, council, well, remember, council took a vote to say, we want to see a feasibility study in terms of a swimming pool. The discussion on the ice rink actually came out of the joint discussions with the school district, where it was the school district that brought that piece. And so that's actually what added to the cost of the study. So that's the point of having the partnership. I will say that I've had conversations with the superintendent. As I would say, if he were asking me the question is, yes, I can't commit until the board takes action, and actually, we're having another meeting Friday to discuss this. So he's aware of the conversation.
And I've had at least one or two conversations with several board members. So I'd move jointly fund the feasibility study.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I joke a lot about, I like this idea, and I get ribbed about it quite a bit. But the, so first things first, $150,000 does seem like a lot. So is that normal for a feasibility study of something like this?
We did, I developed that, that number based on conversation with surrounding communities that were doing the like, like type of work. I think the addition that adds to it is the specifics about how much it's going to cost to renovate Centennial Pool and develop those specific recommendations.
And thank you. Okay, so that was my first concern. And I guess the other thing is that, just in response to the fine gentleman from what we're doing in Ward 2.
Yes.
From the fine gentleman from Ward 2. I guess, I mean, the, I love Longmont, we all love Longmont, but we're not in the mountains. And we always talk, we can be a great gateway community, but we're not. We're, I mean, we're, we're Longmont, we're 15 minutes from Lyons, we're 20 to 30 minutes from Boulder, we're, I mean, just a stone's throw from I-25. And if you want people to come here, we need to build reasons for them to come. And right now, we're kind of a blue collar Longmont town. And whether we grow away from that or not, our parks, our trails, and our rec centers and rec departments are one of the best ways, amenities are what we can do to attract people and make our constituents happy. I by no means would advocate that we should build a pool or an ice rink at any and all costs. But in my experience with the Epic Center growing up and in talking with folks, it will make money. And so I don't think that it's necessarily a question of whether or not we do it or don't do it, do we need the facilities or not, because I think we do. But I also think that this is an opportunity, not only just provide an awesome amenity, but it's something that will carry itself. And so, and it's also something that's not going to be able to be built today. You know, it's going to be five, 10 years out. And so without a feasibility study, we're never going to know for sure and have some certainty in order to be able to move forward. And this town, for the last 30 years, has been known for not having pool, ice, and other facilities that other cities have. I'd like them, because I think that will make my experience more pleasant, it'll make our kids' experience more pleasant. And I think that future residents of Longmont will want to come here regardless of income level, if they have a place to go play hockey, swim competitively, or eventually other amenities that would be built. So I would beg you, Councilman Moore, to change that decision. And let's get a feasibility study done. That's what I think we should do.
You know, one thing we haven't addressed here, I mean, we've talked almost an hour on economic development and our strategy there. First is part of that strategy is, you know, if we have a city that's visionary and elected officials that are visionary that want to actually see the future five to seven years from now, make decisions now based on how we vision, you know, this is why we need to do this kind of thing, you know? I mean, it's expensive, but if we don't do this type of thing, you know, we could miss out on some major company that wants to move here, but they've got, you know, three of their daughters are competitive swimmers, and they decide, well, we can't move here because there's no place for our daughters to swim, or hockey, or, yeah. So I'm, you know, I think it's a great investment. I mean, I, I think if we do this feasibility study, we're going to learn a lot. You know, whether or not we decide to build a pool or ice rink, that doesn't mean that, as long as we learn something from that study that we can use. You know, I think we have to go forward at this point, you know, to, and I'm going to go for it. So, Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And I couldn't agree more. It is part of the economic development. But also, this is the city, we're not a town. And it's also a part of that identity that we're trying to get, that, the marketing. I'm tired of hearing, we're just Longmont. Listen to yourselves. We're Longmont. You don't want to be Boulder, you don't want to be Lafayette, you don't want to be Loveland. Be proud, you know, you're elected to the city council of Longmont, the city of Longmont. Be proud of your city. Reflect that. I, you know, I don't know if we can, you know, have this in five years. I don't know if we can have it in 10 years. That's the whole purpose of doing this, is seeing whether or not we can do it. I can't wait to have Dry Creek come online, once we can get it done. I can't wait to get the Greenways back, up and running. And when people ask me, when are the Greenways going to come back? And I hope in two to three years, we have things rolling, we're repairing things. Longmont's going to come back. Whenever we go out to, you know, as individuals, where are you from? I'm from Longmont, I've never heard of it. Well, let me tell you about what we have. Be proud. This is something that we can potentially, you know, as the mayor said and as Councilmember Bagley said, something that's going to be able to bring people into, into the city.
All right, Mayor, can I add one? I want to underscore one component that Jeff talked, bring attention to one component that Jeff talked about. Part of this in the cost is really the assessment of Centennial. And what we mean by assessment is really getting into the guts of Centennial and understanding what that condition is and what that means to us in the future. So that's a piece that is a little bit different from the normal study, but we really need to, we need to understand that.
Okay. Well, I guess we've had the discussion, we've had a motion and a second, so let's vote. Okay, it passes 7 to 0. Thank you. Thank you. I guess it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who would like to come and speak at this point?
Hi, kids. Hi, kids, you remember me? Paul Tiger, 634 Main Street. So I came back, by the way, I wanted to thank you. I have a friend who, I'm a gregarious person who meets people on the train. This person is going to come here and visit me, and I've been telling him all about Longmont now for weeks. I'd love for him to move here. So what's going on? Let's see, a few years ago, I was, 2007, some of you remember me being in handcuffs above the fold. So the issue was is that the city had all kinds of repaving going on on the east-west streets. And they sent letters by the assessor to the people who owned the buildings. These were commercial buildings, these were businesses. And when I found out that the street in front of my business was going to be shut down for approximately two weeks, was two days before it happened when it appeared in the Times Call. The, I went to the city, I talked to many, many people at the city, this gentleman's predecessor, I haven't been arrested on his watch, so there must be something about that. And what they agreed was, is that you're right, we know who the business owners are because they pay taxes to the city. So why didn't we send letters to them? Because they sent letter to my property owner, who is a little old lady who lives in Florida who never talks to me. And this is true of all of the businesses that I went and talked to around on Nelson Road. We did not know. The Danish furniture place decided to have a big sale on the same day that they shut the street off. Okay? So it's, I, I know it's hard, it's difficult to inform renters, which is what was going on here before this, this other topic. But tell the business owners, send letters to the people that you get tax money from, that would be retail. And that's, that's what I'm talking about. I'm in a retail business. A street in front of my business has been shut down. We had that wackadoo thing going on there with Cotton's Building, where the street was turned off and then back, and then shut down, and then back. And we, it was just insane, it was a fruit machine. We didn't know. So I'd appreciate it if you would work a little bit, think about that now, that the businesses, if they have to close, the landowner might care when he can't get his rent. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else like to speak at final call, public invited to be heard? Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Gabe Santos, 1088 Button Rock Court, mayor, members of council. As a board member of the Hispanic Education Foundation, I'd like to cordially invite you to attend the 26th Annual Hispanic Education Foundation Scholarship Banquet. It is May 1st, 2014, Thursday, 6:00 PM at Skyline High School. That's 600 East Mountain View Avenue. The guest, actually, the keynote speaker will be Ana Cabrera of CNN. So it's, this year we hope to award, I believe, you have to help me out, Don, I believe over $23,000 in scholarships to students of the Satan Brain Valley School District. So we hope, I'm sorry, May 1st. Skyline, 6 o'clock. Roughly 8:30. So dinner will be, will be provided. You have all been sent, and I do know, invitations by email. There is a $40 cost, but as you are being invited in your elected capacity, I do believe that that might be covered by the city. If not, you can pay it on your own. So, and dinner is provided by San Javas. So we hope to see you there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Somehow it's already on my calendar, so. Anybody else like to speak at final call, public invited to be heard? Okay, I guess so. It's time for now. Mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. It's come to my attention that your birthday.
Yes, it is.
So I have several other items to go through, but I think first we should sing happy birthday to the mayor. Are you ready? Here we go. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Dennis. Happy birthday to you. Okay, my next thing. The Ed Green Scholarship Dinner is this Friday at Xylance. It is to provide scholarships for our sister cities ambassadors. And it's a lot... And it's a lot of fun and they have great auction, silent auction items that you can bid on. So, I would encourage everyone to, um, to go to that dinner on Friday, April twenty-fifth. My business of the week is Fly Irons Family Pharmacy. It's a new pharmacy at six oh-three Ken Pratt Boulevard. They're having their ribbon cutting also this Friday, so check them out.
Awesome. Well, if any of you haven't signed up yet, there's a Mud Hen five K fundraiser on McIntosh Lake, which is raising money for Habitat for Humanity that gave us a presentation tonight. So, if anybody wants to dust off their sneakers and come out and then run on Saturday morning, I'll be there. Councilmember Rosen.
Yes, a couple of more things. Um, tomorrow evening, we've got that quick groundbreaking, real groundbreaking at museum. And then, um, Saturday, there's a lot going on besides Mud Hen. Um, there is a cleanup event for downtown. And then, um, I know several of us are supporting the youth council in their initiative to make sure that underage kids that shouldn't be drinking don't get possession of alcohol. And, um, I just, I think that they were certainly on the, the right track because they came to us at council on a Tuesday and by Friday, underage drinking was front, front and center on the pa, on the, the front page of the paper. And, uh, we know it's a problem now, for real. So, uh, just wanted to, uh, um, encourage adults to abide by the law. And I'm glad we're participating with the youth council on those things. And I hope everybody comes out to that Ed Green Dinner because it is a lot of fun. And last year, we double booked ourselves because it was council retreat weekend. So, it was really hard to get there. And I also want to say one other thank you to, um, today, there was a gathering at the senior center to honor Marietta Gonzalez and Jim Nason, who are relocating, um, from our community. And, um, a city in California will be the beneficiary of their volunteer and, uh, experiences that they nurtured here in our community, all of their wisdom and their energy. And it will be a big loss to all of us. And so, happy trails. And, uh, I understand they do have a guest bedroom. They'll have lots of visitors from Longmont.
Councilmember Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Levinson always steals my thunder, so I'm going to talk about it again anyway. The sticker shock campaign is, uh, Saturday. The youth council will be fixing labels like this to, um, product in the stores. They'll have an adult, um, chaperone with each student. And, uh, I think it's a, it's a worthy cause. It's, uh, to bring about awareness of the issue of underage drinking. It is prom season, it is also people getting out of school and doing the stuff that kids do. So, eleven-thirty at Lucky's, there's going to be a press event. And one o'clock at Fox Creek. So, um, I'm sure that any volunteers are welcome and even if just to watch, so. And I'd like to also mention on May third, uh, the second project that youth council is working through is the vandalism awareness, um, campaign they're putting together. It'll be at Roosevelt Park on May third, at St. of the Bio. And so, they're going to be part of the youth, um, community services booth. And that's to bring about awareness of vandalism and there'll be some giveaways and some games. So, it should be a fun event. Hope to see you all there at Roosevelt Park at least. On Saturday? Yeah, that's a ten. It's a, all right, and, um, yeah, coffee with council. Uh, Saturday at, um, Red Frog, so.
Hey, city manager, any comments?
No comments, Mayor, Council.
City journey, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.